Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of February 19th, 2019. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are here. Meeting agenda approval, is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Councilmember McNeil?
Yes, I'd like to pull 19-025 from consent.
Okay. Any other changes to tonight's agenda? None? Okay. Moving on to special presentations, so recognition of Public Works and the Parks Departments. And, oh, that's a, I'm sorry. I skipped over, sorry, the review of public engagement opportunities. February 22nd through the 24th, the Waste Mobile will be in Bothell at the Seattle Times Building. Bring your hazardous, household hazardous waste to the Waste Mobile from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For a complete list of items they accept, please visit our website. February 23rd, Fire Department push-in ceremony, 11:00 a.m. at Fire Station 42. Join the Fire Department as they place one of two new fire engines in service with a traditional push-in ceremony. Light refreshments will be served. And that's that. And then we have special presentations, and I'll come down to the podium for this part.
Mayor Rayum, we have the State of the, oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
I won't say it. I'll come down to the podium. So, I don't know if everybody follows Facebook and stuff like that, but I've actually got an opportunity to ride in a snowplow with the crew this year, and it was pretty amazing, pretty fun. So, we have a proclamation for the Public Works and the Parks Department. Whereas Executive and Public Works Department staff monitored coming storms and communicated vital information to the community so they could clear all eligible groceries from local stores before the second round of storms. And whereas the Public Works Crew worked 24 hours a day through Snowmageddon 2019 to clear roadways for emergency responders, transit, residents, and businesses, including those making a final grocery round for the last mushy banana. Actually, there was one loaf of bread, it was rye bread, and I took a picture of it. Whereas Parks and Facilities Crew cleared city facility walkways, parking lots, flat roofs, ensuring Station 42's roof wouldn't cave in during the last few years of its life. And whereas staff worked as a team to ensure the safety of the public and each other. Now therefore, I, Andrew John Rayum, do hereby proclaim our appreciation to the Public Works Department and the Parks Department for their incredible hard work and dedication during Snowmageddon 2019. Presenting.
Mayor, I didn't know if you wanted to have the council say a few things. I know several have shared their appreciation of the crews during this event, and a few might want to also say a few words.
Sure. I guess I could kick it off and just say that I work for a different city nearby here that provides public work services, and the phone has been ringing off the hook with people that have been upset. And here, I just checked with the city manager, and I have received zero emails and zero phone calls from the residents here, and neither has the city manager's office. So, my hat's off to you guys, the crew's done a fantastic job communicating with the public and providing the services that we need. We recently passed a Safe Streets and Sidewalks Levy, and a big chunk of that money actually goes to road services, including snow management. So, there's your tax dollars at work. So, does anybody else have anything they want to add? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to share what I actually shared on Twitter, which was, I was recognizing, you know, when we were seeing all this stuff on Twitter about your hours 24/7, and I thought, wow, I'm snuggled up at home with my kids, enjoying time together with them, and you didn't have that. And so, I just really wanted to recognize the dedication it took. I thought it was noteworthy that someone emailed us and said, hey, when are you going to get to our road? And they were at unincorporated Snohomish County, so they didn't, they didn't have the services that we do, and I'm really, really, really proud of how well we did. I heard nothing but good things about our service and how quickly we cleared the road. So, much, much appreciation.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And I will also add that this is my first year in the city when we had snow, before I was in King County, and the snowplows were down my road, and I was very pleased to see that. And so, I'm very glad to be in the city of Bothell. I also want to recognize that our city manager, Jennifer Phillips, was very much keeping the staff safe by taking care of the front desk and having people stay home. And while our city clerk, Laura, did have a concussion, I'm glad you're doing well. Don't slip on the ice, right?
Councilmember Agnew?
I think Public Works did just a marvelous job. I unfortunately had to go up and get my grandkids out of Mill Creek, and their roads were not nearly as nice as ours. In fact, as I was driving down, I see these two plows coming down the Bothell-Leverett Highway, side by side, opening everything up, and you guys did a great job, just a great job. Thank you very much.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. I'd also like to thank you for the tree removals and keeping our roads safe. It wasn't just the snow on the road, but it was the fallen trees, and making sure that people were always in a safe place, so, thank you.
Councilmembers Orange?
My family accuses me of being a sentimental slob, and Public Works knows that the guys who keep our streets clean have a special place in my heart. And so, every time I see the streets being swept, I'm like, go team, because, you know, they're what? They're the spit and polish of our, of our city. So, when I was out walking, because I live near downtown, I saw, you know, snowplow after snowplow going east, west, north, south, and I was just, it's like, that's, those are, those are my people. It was, it was very heartening to see, but now, not to, and I do have to say, I got to relive my childhood and go sledding, so I was appreciative of that particular street not being plowed, so that, you know, we had some community enjoyment. But not to be outdone, I had a neighbor brag on our police and fire also during this time, because we had trees come down and bring down, one tree came down and brought three poles down, and within five minutes, our fire and police were there checking it out and checking safety. So, we're a pretty amazing team, and I'm pretty partial to you guys. Thank you.
Last but not least, Councilmember Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to say that, I was out shoveling my sidewalk on Tuesday after one of the big snows, and I saw the snowplow go by a couple times, you know, wave at them, and they'd wave back, so, you know, they're just out there, you know, enjoying being in the snowplow, getting done, and, you know, I mean, it's always great when you can see that immediate results and people driving so much better, so, I mean, I know how I felt after I finished shoveling my sidewalk, and those guys get to do it throughout all the streets of Bothell. And, you know, then I saw people walking down the sidewalk, and they're like, oh, thanks, thanks, they're, you know, doing your sidewalk. So, I think everyone's happy with the snowplows and all the work that Public Works and Parks did, so, thank you.
Mayor? Yep.
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk about one of our police officers that made the international news by sledding down a hill with some children.
I saw that video. That was good. You guys want to go another round of stories? Snow stories? Okay. We do have a pretty big agenda. All right, so let's see here, moving on. State of the College President Murray is here from Cascadia College.
Members of the council, good evening. Hello, everyone. I think the last time I gave an official State of the College address to the city council was Snowmageddon 2012. And so, I'm actually interested in changing that practice. While our two agencies work together all the time, master plans, buildings, roads, those kinds of things, I think it's important that the council be aware of the resource right in the backyard and how we're doing each year. So, I'm making a commitment to all five of the cities that Cascadia serves to come and give a State of the College address once a year, and hopefully, Snowmageddon won't happen every year that I do that. So, we kind of have a phrase, we took "community" out of the name Cascadia Community College, changed to Cascadia College when we started offering bachelor's degrees a couple years ago, and about half of the state's community colleges did the same. But our tagline is now "Your Community's College." Cascadia College, Your Community's College, because it's also that way in Woodinville and Kirkland and Redmond, we're their community college as well. So, I'll give just a bit of background on where we are today, and then if there are any questions, I can entertain those. So, as we know, a community college provides open access, there are no admission requirements besides a G, high school diploma or equivalent to get in. We're the most affordable option in higher ed, although I won't say that we are affordable to all, but we are the most affordable. We have programs designed by industry. We are mostly a transfer institution, 90% of our kids actually, students, actually transfer on to a university somewhere, 2/3 of those going to the University of Washington system. We have more PhD faculty than any of the other community colleges, probably because of our tie with U-Dub Bothell and our transfer mission, and of course, we try to be flexible and convenient with classes most of the time. Here's the slide for me that's kind of relevant. We now serve 5,349 individuals, and that was a lot different than the day we opened in 2000 where we were serving 800. As you can see, the different demographics, 58% working part-time. We have the lowest number of students on financial aid, but the most number of students at any community college in the state who work part-time. What that says to me is that we serve a huge middle class, those folks who need to actually work to help pay for their way. And right now, our enrollment is actually down by about 6%, and we believe because the economy is so good, people are stepping out to earn a little bit of money to afford their next future quarters. We call those pause persisters, people who pause for a while, and they persist on that pause until they've earned enough money to come back. These are the five cities from whom we get the most students. Bothell, number one, then Woodinville, Kirkland, Snohomish, which is actually not my by-definition service district, but a lot of students come south from Snohomish. Likewise, while we serve Redmond, most of those students go south to Bellevue College. So, there's just this phenomena of students moving one college closer to Seattle. On the south side of Seattle, students move one college up closer to Seattle, so it's a weird kind of phenomena. And then Kenmore. Our top feeder high schools, as you can see, the North Shore School District is right up there with our top three. North Creek hasn't really taken on just yet, they're getting their full complement of students this year for the first time, and I think over the next couple of years, Running Start and, and graduates will start coming from North Creek as well. But you can see that all of the, the high schools are within our service district. The North Shore Homeschool Network also, we serve a number of homeschool students. It's kind of amazing how we've gotten a reputation for being a good place for homeschooling. And as well, we have a huge number of Running Start students. We serve students from over 45 different high schools in our Running Start program, so we have a reputation there as well. We, of course, have transfers degrees, that's what gets you on to a university, associate's degrees. We have a large Running Start program, and our STEM programs are probably the most popular programs at the institution. We also see them coming for our bachelor's degrees. We have two actually now, one in environmental sustainability and another in mobile application development, so a computer science-type degree. We do all of the basic things a comprehensive community college does, adult basic ed, worker retraining, and we do corporate and continuing education. With corporate and continuing education, we try to network with our various businesses in our service district, helping them to have access to these kinds of programs, getting grants for training, helping incumbent worker training, and help them with recruitment pipelines for their workforce. This slide actually is, I updated it since I wrote this, we have a $24 million annual budget, and you can see our employees. Right now, we, well, we'll get to the challenges ahead in a little bit, we have a $24 million budget, but we have some challenges ahead with that. And so, what are those challenges? First off, we have what we're calling an enrollment valley. We're about 6% down in our enrollment of students. That affects me tremendously to the tune of about $500,000, and so, I'll be having to write a budget for next year, which takes into account that lower amount of revenue. I don't control my revenue through tuition, legislature sets that, and I don't control my revenue through the state allocation, legislature controls that. The only way I control it is through increasing the number of students who come to Cascadia. And because of the pause persisters that we talked about, the people stepping out to earn money to afford the next few quarters, our enrollment has gone down a bit. So, I have to weather that, I have to make some budgetary cuts for the next couple of years. We have healthy reserves to get us through this time, but it's, it's still tough when you're in a booming economy, yet our resources are dwindling. Right now, and I was just asked a minute ago, is this going to be a good year in the legislature for us? I don't think we're going to be harmed by the legislature. I'm not sure we're going to be helped by the legislature. Right now, it seems that the, the only way to get money is to sue them or have a crisis. And we know that with Western State Hospital being deaccredited, that is the major funding need right now in the city, since McCleary's been, for the most part, wrapped up. But there is an ORCA crisis, a housing crisis, an opioid crisis, a transportation crisis, a K-12 special education crisis, there are crises everywhere. So, well, I don't think we're going to be helped, so we have to make it work. And that's the second challenge, is our legislative support. And the third challenge is continuing to make sure that we market in a way that students want to come to us. Opportunities, we are really close to making our fourth building and U-Dub's fourth building a joint building funded together by the legislature, there seems to be traction for this, which means we won't build two buildings, we'll build one. And that's good for students, that saves taxpayer dollars, it saves on construction, logistics, and for me, I think it's inspirational because it represents the co-location of U-Dub Bothell and Cascadia. It is exactly what I think the legislature, Councilmember McAuliffe, it's weird to call you that now, but I think it's what you envisioned 25, 30 years ago, that we would have this system whereby the community college leads directly to universities through this co-located campus, and this new building absolutely represents the new synergy we've had over the last three years of working with U-Dub Bothell. Relationship wasn't great all of the time, but it has been wonderful the last three years. We've turned a corner, and we're doing things together, including building more parking, talking to each other about our academic pathways, working on equity and inclusion work across the campus as one campus, and Running Start expansion as a Cascadia-only opportunity. But most of these things tie into the fact that we are tied at the hip to U-Dub Bothell. So, those are, that's the basic rundown of the numbers, the opportunities and the challenges that the college is facing right now. Happy to entertain any questions from you, and if not, I'll see you officially in a year when I think we'll do this yearly, if I'm allowed to come back.
I don't think so. What do you guys think? Should I come back? Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Has it really been that long? Because I remember when I was here.
You know, I've talked on different things here. I don't know if it was a State of the College address, this is only my second, my second one, but we're going to change that.
So, I had a colorful, colorful college career, and I went to just about every community college, yeah, community college around here. I didn't, I don't think Cascadia was up yet.
Yeah, 2000 we opened.
By the time I got to that point, I needed to be at a four-year university. But anyways, the point being that the community colleges are an awesome, awesome place for kids to get credits, half the cost. I have a get program for my kids, they go there for two years on the account that I set up for them, but at a university they've got one year. So, it's just a really good, it's a really nice and good service that we provide the community. Any questions? There we go, Councilmember Orange?
Just a comment. I think my, four of my five homeschool students did Running Start at Cascadia, so I have a special place in my heart for Cascadia. I just really love the way the institution has just nurtured and helped those kids go into adulthood with very meaningful classes, so that's been awesome. I think my son was the first graduating class of Cascadia at their new campus. What is, my one quick question is, where down the pipeline do you think this new STEM building will be where you can open the doors for it, if you were to take a guess?
If the legislature goes with our pitch to fund it all this session, we'll be open two years from July, which will increase the capacity that Cascadia has to offer primetime classes right in the middle of the day, which will hopefully help our enrollment and also help U-Dub Bothell's enrollment.
Right.
Two years.
Well, it's good to see you guys get a.
Thank you.
Peace.
And if you can recruit 100 more homeschool students, that would solve my budget.
Okay. All right. I'll see what I can do. Thanks.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And Eric, we've struggled a long time between, you know, 1995 with the University of Washington Bothell and Cascadia, and I appreciate very much that you both are working closely together today in support of what we really think is most important, it's college for our students and our, and our families and kids. So, I want to tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you're both working together. You are the backbone of our community.
Thanks.
I hope that, I testified this week on House Bill, Senate Subcommittee House Bill 5705, which is the Washington State Opportunity Scholarship Program. I hope one day that we can offer scholarships for the students that come to your community college.
You know, I think there's traction in the legislature, it won't probably be funded this year, but for a promised scholarship across the state, so that the 13th year or the first year of community college is free for all of our residents, because it's becoming almost basic education now. So, that, that has seen support on both sides of the aisle in Olympia, it's just we don't have the money right now.
We, and I understand when you talk about crises, do have a lot of crises to face, but the other crisis is being sure that our community colleges are open and the doors are open for our students major.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? You guys good?
Then I'm off to Woodinville to do the exact same.
All right. What time do they start?
Seven.
Oh, you got time. Thanks for coming. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the staff briefing, the Wellness Committee, and we have Janet Geir. You're not Janet, there's Janet.
My name is Susan Wolf, and I work in our Human Resources Department here at the city, and I am also the coordinator for the city's Wellness Committee. So, what is wellness? Wellness encompasses many aspects of our lives, including our physical, intellectual, emotional, social, spiritual, financial, and our career health. And our goal as a committee is to provide to our employees a program in each of these dimensions that will help employees find their own path to wellness. And we provide programs like yoga, massage, that encourage staff to take care of themselves. And then we also provide lunch and learn topics and events that help our staff better themselves and help our community. So, who is wellness? Our community, our, our committee is made up of volunteers who have a passion for helping their coworkers be the best version that they can of themselves. And we currently have most of our departments serving on our committee. We're missing a few, but we're working on that. So, why does wellness matter in the workplace? Wellness matters because when employees feel satisfied and healthy in their work, they have better attendance, and they're way more productive. When staff feel good, they provide better customer service to our community, which translates to a happier and healthier community. And some of our wellness events that we provide are intended to reach into our community, such as our blood drive, our food collection, and our gift-giving events. Participation in our wellness program is voluntary for both our committee members and our staff. And through our AWC, which is our third-party benefits, Health Benefits Administrator, we participate in the WellCity program. Staff can track their steps, sleep, eating habits, they can access health tips, participate in six-week behavioral programs, take surveys, things like that, either through their phone, an app on their phone, or they can access it through a website. And once 50% of our eligible staff and their spouses reach the requirements that AWC set, the city receives a 2% discount on our health premium benefits. And we have reached that, the requirements that AWC sets, we've reached those requirements every year since 2019, and which in 2018, that equated to the city saving over $86,000. So, how can council participate in our wellness program? Well, our committee encourages council to participate in ways such as attending a wellness meeting or participating in Random Acts of Kindness Week, which happens to be this February 25th, we are having a pancake breakfast as a way of thanking our operation crews for their kind service, not only through the last snowstorm, but for all that they do. We're also holding a March for Hunger food drive in the month of March, so there'll be places that you could donate food in all of our city buildings. We have blood drives that happen, you may have seen the Bloodmobile out front Friday, so we encourage staff and community members to participate in that. But as council members, we invite you to participate in our city employee picnic, which will be happening in the summer, and we'll also be bringing back the Giving Tree at the end of the year again. If you'd like more information regarding the events that we do, or any of, you know, attending a meeting or anything like that, please reach out and let us know, and we'll get you more information on that. At this time, we just want to thank you guys, we want to thank our city manager for her excellent support of our wellness goals. We want to thank you guys for approving the budget that HR has brought forth. Our wellness budget is, is put in part of that package that HR brings forth, and we look forward to bringing new opportunities to council for participating in the future. And at this time, if you have any questions, we are here to answer them for you.
Questions? Councilmember Agnew?
Yep. Where can I get that massage?
We have, we have a massage therapist who comes in once a month and does a 15-minute chair massage for staff. We'll make sure you can understand, or get them email.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next is the city manager, council committee reports. City manager has one this time, so let's let the circle first.
I do, and the Assistant City Manager is going to be providing that report this evening.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. Tonight, I just wanted to provide a quick update on some implementation of previous council direction, as you're remembering your legislative priorities. Your transportation priority at the very top of your legislative priorities this year was fund improvements on I-405. And just to, as a reminder, that was the city request the state fund $20 million for right-of-way acquisition and $450 million for construction and north-end improvements on I-405, either through direct state funding or bonding against toll revenue. Then it explains the investment, and we also state it's critical this investment is made this biennium to allow construction to begin in 2021. So, I mentioned that because there's a couple things moving on that right now that I just wanted to brief the council quickly on. One of those is that your lobbyists for Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs are going to be testifying in support of the tolling authorization bill in the Senate on Thursday. And the, as a reminder, this particular toll authorization bill puts permanent tolls on all of 405 and State Route 167. Right now, there is no tolling on the south end of 405, and State Route 167 expires very soon. So, that simply extends the tolling authorization. That would provide money necessary to finish the south end of 405, so that provides the 215 million necessary for that. But without bonding against that toll revenue, it would not fund our $450 million in improvements yet. So, the important thing that I just wanted to brief you on is that your lobbyist will be speaking in support of that on Thursday. This is because it helps the entire corridor, and also be, the support that the city is showing for this bill is because it provides a way of finding the revenue to fund the $450 million that is your priority. So, those will be the explanation on Thursday. I also wanted to flag for you that this is WashDOT's number-one legislative priority, is this tolling authorization bill. To pair with that, WashDOT requested $20 million in right-of-way as part of their agency budget this year. They did not request the 450 million, so in order to get it into the transportation budget ask, they do need someone to put in the request for it, and so, they've asked the city to be the requester of the 450 million. Doesn't mean we're building it, just means they need a name on it. So, I also wanted to brief council on that, that technically, we would be submitting that request. I have spoken with our lobbyists on the pros and cons of this, it doesn't endanger any of your other asks, it's a completely separate budget, it simply enters it into the hopper to be considered by the transportation budget writers.
I think the council's fine with that, right? Yep. Looks good.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, so who's got some committee reports? Deputy Mayor?
I have several. I was going to, I haven't been updating on Bothell Planning Commission, so I thought I'd, I'd start. Last meeting, there was a discussion about the small cell wireless concealment code amendment. amendments. We passed the interim code, but they're looking into the design options, which include decorative poles, steel streetlight standards, and wooden utility poles. There's a, there's a lot to unpack there, but basically just looking at ways that it doesn't negatively impact the aesthetics of our streets. And then they also had a brief discussion about the planning docket, which we're talking about tonight. And then for my last meeting of the East Side Transportation Partnership, we had a presentation on the state of transportation system by Patty Rubstello. I'll talk about that more because then we had a briefing from Secretary of Transportation, Roger Millar, at the Transportation Policy Board. And I was just going to briefly go over, I sent it out in my weekly update this, this week, so if anyone wants to request that, I can send the links. But some things that I took away from the presentation are, one in three jobs in Washington is directly or indirectly related to international trade. There are 60 traffic incidences a day between Marysville and Tomwater. Silver tsunami is coming. 41% of WashDOT engineers, 50% of vessel engineers, and 74% of ferry staff masters are eligible to retire in the next five years. Fatalities and injuries are rising due to distracted and impaired driving. There are slides that talk about recent delivery statistics. There's some really, I didn't write them down, but the, I think it's nine out of 10 projects WashDOT has completed on time, and I think it's 85% under budget, which I think is a really, really great track record and shows that they're, they're really trying to be fiscally responsible. The cost to Washington's economy due to congestion, lack of good repair, and safety issues is one of the slides, but it's astronomical. The amount of money we put into those, solving those issues, and the, the net cost to our system is very sobering. There's a pie chart that shows the available funding and the gas tax percentages now and in the future. It's diminishing. And then there was a presentation on the Washington State Ferry's long-range, long-range plan. A quarter of all WashDOT employees are Washington State ferry employees. I didn't realize that. And then due to the I-695 initiative, funding loss resulted in zero ferry replacement for 10 years until connecting Washington came around, and so they're behind in their, their ferry replacement program. Ferries are the largest emitters of greenhouse gases in the state and the largest uses of diesel in the state, and so they have an initiative to try to retrofit some of the ferries that are up for maintenance. And they were talking about, it was, I had to chuckle because they were talking about the really, really liberal bastions of states like Alabama who have, who have ferries that are, I forget, I guess it's hybrid, hybrid type or electric technology. So we're actually behind Alabama and Mississippi and some of those states in terms of our ferry, our ferry vehicles. So I think that was it. I guess I'll just say briefly, I had a Sound Cities Association Board of Directors retreat last Friday, and our priority, we stated our 2019 priorities, and they are transportation, affordable housing, environment and climate change, and workforce development, and had a really long and good discussion on how to better support our member cities and those electeds who are serving on our regional boards and commissions. So I guess that's it. Thanks.
Anybody else have community reports? Oh, there we go. Councilmember McAuliffe?
I actually have only to report that I received the minutes from the Parks and Recreation Board, which was sent to me by Nick, and I totally appreciate the fact that I received the minutes because if I don't attend the meeting, at least I know where they're at. And so I just want to say how much I appreciate getting the minutes from the meetings. And I talked to Nick Stroop about coming to the meetings, and we talked about maybe March or April would be a good time. Correct? So thank you so much.
Councilmembers Orns?
Well, I hesitated to say anything because there's a lot to digest, and I don't want to, I may have to go back and watch the video on, on, on the reports here. But LTAC met today, and there's, Tori might want to help me out on this. At some point, council is going to probably be asked to weigh in on defining how LTAC's budgets, goals are being used so that when the budget comes together, it's in agreement with state law and, and the needs for Bothell. So, so be prepared that that's coming down the pipeline. Do we need to add to that? Okay. And then the other thing is, the website launch is April 16th or 23rd, so stay tuned. We got another month and a half or so for that.
All right. I attended the 405 Executive, or it was Elected, Elected Leadership Group meeting, and it was the first meeting I've been to. And I pointed it out, I pointed it out to everybody, this is for bus rapid changes up and down the 405 corridor. And we're the only segment of the 405 corridor excluding east of I-5. So east of I-5, you know what that looks like on 405, turns into a, it's not really a part of 405. We have the only part that has the buses in general purpose lanes. So I pointed that out to them. Also, they, they are having a sharet, they're calling it, for the Bothell section of the project, so we didn't really get to weigh in on the different projects, but I could tell you our, the other cities on the corridor are very pleased with this stuff that they got. So we stand alone, I would say at this point, as a council, with concern about the project package. So I'll keep you guys updated, but I'm, you know, when I saw the list of stuff, like there's full, you know, hundreds of million dollars interchanges for some cities, and literally our stop at Canyon Park was a bench with a shelter over the bench, and that was about it. So this, this has been, the, the planning for this has been going on for a long time. We've had council members really get on top of this, and that's why we're actually starting to get attention, but I'm somewhat concerned at this point, that a little too late kind of a situation, but hopefully we can pull off something and get something better for our community with the bus rapid transit system. Deputy Mayor?
Can I just add? We have been on top of it. The problem is that we weren't at the table when ST3 was being planned, and, and it will come down on us, but Bothell wasn't there, and they weren't there when they were, when the planning was happening. And now it's really hard to go backwards and try to, try to get infrastructure and things that we need. And it's really disappointing because they have nothing planned for the 522-405 BRT connection. And it, and I would argue it's one of the most connection, most important connections on the entire 405 BRT. So rest assured, we're all over it, but I don't know what, without funding, I don't know what we can get done. So I just wanted everyone to understand the history.
But it's not over yet. It's like that picture with the frog reaching out of the pelican's mouth and choking it. That's what we're doing. With Sound Transit, we're the frog. Okay, any other community reports? No, okay. Where are we? Visitor comment? You'd think I'd memorize this by now. Okay. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. And the first person is Clark Meek.
Mayor, council, my name is Clark Meek. I'm a resident in the Woodcrest Housing Development, just off of Brickyard Road. And my intent tonight was to say thank you for your efforts, meaning your public works crews, police, fire, and all those that provided community service for us in this snow event that we've been dealing with, and still are, in fact, in a lot of ways. Our community is made up of 55 and older, and having those streets taken care of the main arterials and the occasional plowing of our neighborhood really provided the ability for us to get to our doctor appointments, food, and other places. Members of our community were able to help each other in getting to those places and to, you know, we like to think we even helped public works out by taking care of some of the storm drains and so forth, and making sure they were clear and draining during this event. But again, as a citizen, I wanted to thank you and your staff for their efforts in this event, and there we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julian Low.
Hi, I'm Julian Low, Local Government Affairs Manager for Puget Sound Energy, and I'd like to continue on the theme of the evening, which is thanking first responders, Bothell Public Works, for their efforts and their partnership working with our crews. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, just also wanted to thank council members and, of course, our customers who happen to be in the room for their patients as they were affected by last week's heavy snowstorm. The deep snow and heavy slush made access to damaged equipment challenging for our crews in many areas. Crews and support teams were on the job around the clock until everyone's power was restored. We know that these historic storms, freezing temperatures, melt-off, and resulting outages caused significant stress and strain for our customers, some of whom had their power restored only to have it go out again. So we truly appreciated their continued patience, and we did all that we safely could do to get the power back on as quickly as possible. Over the course of the events, we restored 340,000 customers. And so significant efforts were made to bring heavily damaged transmission lines and substations back into service. Crews went neighborhood by neighborhood to restore service to smaller groups of customers, bringing back power on at five, 10, or 20 customers at a time. Over the course of the events, we had nearly 1,000 response personnel working on outage restoration efforts, including more than 100 crews working in the field and hundreds of support staff. As crews finished work in one area, they were dispatched to repair damage in others, and our crews worked alongside with teams from out-of-state and British Columbia, as well as bringing in additional resources. And I think that, you know, while we had the outages and this was a historic storm, I wanted to, again, remind folks that it's never too early to prepare for the next set of outages. You know, one of the things that we always tell folks who are without power is do not use charcoal or gas to cook indoors, or a gas grill to cook indoors. And then finally, never touch or go within 35 feet of downed power lines. Because they might be energized, please call our customer care line or 911 to report problems. And then also want to encourage folks to report online outages via our website, which is pse.comoutage. On our outage map, they can see outages in their area, pse.comoutage map. And then you can download our app to your Android or Apple phone at pse.comapp. And then finally, I always want to take the moment to talk about sustainability and how PSE is working with our customers to reduce our carbon footprint 50% by the year 2040. I know that climate change and being more sustainable is a priority of this council, and so I wanted to just leave behind some information about our Together campaign because it's in partnership with our customers that we are going to form a clean, cleaner energy future together. So I've got copies for all council members. I'll leave it with the clerk here. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you. Next is John Loy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm John Loy, and I live in Bothell. I just wanted to commend Rosemary McAuliffe, Councilwoman McAuliffe. She's been very helpful in addressing a speed concern on Riverside Drive. I'm a, I'm a, now I'm part of the silver tsunami that you referred to, and I go down to the senior center every three days a week to an exercise class at 8:00 a.m. And I notice in coming down there that the speed of the vehicles is, you know, anywhere from 35 to 45 miles an hour in a 25 zone. And so I asked Rosemary if she could get one of those monitoring devices, because the last meeting I was here, you had a presentation on the speed monitoring device, and it really worked great. Well, it was out there, tail end of December or whennot, and it really did the job, really did the job. So kind of what I wanted to see is if you would think about possibly placing one of those devices there more permanently. And the other reason, I, I've been working with the senior center and their safety and exit and entrance areas and the parking. And as you know, they're kind of an adjunct of the city, and with all the new seniors coming in here with this new facility coming in downtown, there, there's a lot of demand and a lot of people going in and out. And what really got me going one morning when I came in, two of the ladies in my exercise class are 90, and they're crossing the street in their walkers. And it was really comical in a way, but then they almost got hit. And so I provided them flashlights, you know, so they'd be more visible. But that's a really bad intersection in the morning, and the traffic is coming around there, and if there's no light and they're the, you know, continues, they catch a big head of speed up by the time they get to, you know, about 112th and down that way, or a little further east. Lastly, I just also wanted to compliment the road department as well. They came up, I live on Norway Hill, and you know, we get the snow up there when it comes to Bothell. But I wanted to point out one thing, is I don't know if you've heard about bot dots. Do you know what bot dots are? Well, the city at some expense, and I'm going to give you these, the city at great expense put those up there because instead of having, you know, a double line, you know, painted line, these are supposed to be more durable allegedly and last longer, but what really happened is the snowplow kind of, you know, took most of them out. And that's okay, you know, but just so you know, those are called bots dots, and the state of California is not using them anymore because now the new thing is the, you know, the cars that are going to be operating without drivers, and bots dots gets, gets them confused. So again, thank you to the city for working on these traffic issues. We really appreciate it. And there's a bunch of bot dots up there to collect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Monica Soluski, Soluski? Soluski, I got it right the first time. Wow.
I'm one of the owners of Bothell Healthcare, a nursing home that's licensed for 99 residents. It's the only nursing home in Bothell, and because of all the barriers to entry, it is likely to remain the only nursing home in Bothell. Our facility is illegal non-conforming use. Under the current code, that means it can't be improved by expansion. I've owned the building since 1993 and seen the type of resident change dramatically. The type of residents we had in 1993 today live in assisted living. Today, our nursing home is where subacute patients go for a short-term stay and frail elderly with complex medical conditions live. Since 2010, the property has been leased to and operated by Quality Healthcare of Bothell, locally owned and managed by Julie and Art Bingman. Julie's the administrator, and Art oversees housekeeping and maintenance. They have a staff of 140, of which 20 are in the rehab department. If you live in Bothell and you have a stroke or perhaps a knee or hip replacement, your hospital stay is likely to be much shorter than it would have been 20 years ago, because the hospital is going to be paid today the same amount whether you're there for one day or 20 days. You may be discharged home if you're frail, or there is no, you may be discharged home, but if you're frail, or there was no one at home to help you, you may come to Bothell Healthcare for a short stay, where you will get whatever therapies you need, physical, occupational, and speech. Our building is old, and it was designed with semi-private rooms and four people sharing a toilet and sink and showers in the hallways. We believe that most people would prefer a private room and a private toilet. We believe that most people would prefer a private room and a private toilet. Our gym is well-equipped, but small and crowded. Our building stays full. In 2018, we had 367 admissions, and 72% of these admissions came from the city of Bothell. Medicare and Medicaid are the main source of funding for all of our patients. Hence, all elderly and disabled, regardless of their financial situation, have access to our services. The average length of stay in 2018 was 34 and 1/2 days for the short term and 2 and 1/2 years for the long-term residents. We'd like to improve the quality of life for our short and long-term residents by adding a wing of private rooms with private bathrooms and showers, which would allow us to convert an equal number of existing semi-private rooms to private with our own bathrooms. We'd like to build a state-of-the-art gym and a nicer dining room. We'd not be adding any additional beds or any additional staff, so it would have no impact on traffic. These are the reasons why I'm asking you to consider an amendment to the Bothell Municipal Code to add conditional uses for nursing homes within residential zones. You can make a difference in the lives of the city of Bothell aged population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pat Pierce.
I, too, would like to come in. Jacqueline Brandenburg's crew and the incredible job they did. It was amazing to kind of watch as it blew past the house. But I'm really here to talk about the docket, and I have some concerns. One of them has to do with pushing things forward to when you do the comp plan. And I'd like to suggest that you do that with item nine. There's an obscene of that, the downtown general, the general downtown corridor overlay. And also for the item 18, which is the spot rezon request up on 187th. That would allow more input, more community involvement in the process, and you'd be further along as far as transportation issues and knowing how that was working as far as the busing, if you delayed it to the comp plan update. And then under 9B, there's Title 22's mentioned in there. And it was understood that last year, Title 22 was on the docket to be changed because of problems creating districts. That hasn't happened. Five years ago, my neighborhood decided they'd like to be a historic district. Four years ago, the landmark board passed off on it, and it's still in limbo. It hasn't come to council yet because of problems with Title 22. So could that be resolved this year and not let go for another year? And when doing that, you might want to look at replacing the design guidelines that you have with a zoning overlay, which is what some other certified local governments, CLGs use. Lacy uses it, for instance. And it might be a lot easier and a lot cleaner going forward with districts. With that, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to give a public comment? Please come up to the podium and give your name.
Steve Holmes, a local resident, 10150 Northeast 201st. I wasn't planning on speaking, but the lady from Bothell Healthcare, my mom's been there twice, and she's there right now. The facility needs some help, and the amendment, I think, would really help them. But those folks do a fantastic job for seniors, especially with Medicare and Medicaid that they accept. And not everybody accepts that, and they do. So I would really, and they have a lot of property up there. I would definitely, someone here needs to look at and amend what they need to get done, because that place is very vital for our community. And being experienced there with my mom, I was just there today with a meeting with them. It's a very, they know what they're doing up there, and they give really good service. So don't forget about it and look at it, see what you guys can do. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, we'll move on. The consent agenda, so we had AB 19-025 pulled. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Agnew, second by Councilmember McNeil. I think you beat her on that one. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote.
I don't know why it's not showing up, but it passed 7-0.
All right, passes unanimously. AB dash, I'm sorry, 19-025, Councilmember McNeil, you pulled it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just, first of all, I think it's fabulous that we have the opportunity to be in this place where we're actually doing the feasibility study on the opportunities that we have on the front nine acreage there and the economic driver that we can build. But I did have a couple of questions, and I just want to make sure, clarifying questions on. In the report, it talks about three opportunities. I was hoping the city manager could maybe explain a little bit about those opportunities and/or our economic development director. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. For the record, my name is Jeanie Ash, and I'm the director, I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city. So with regards to those three, those three topics or those three sectors that we chose for the feasibility study, those were based on what we see as potential uses on the location. One, the brewery actually came from the Parks and Rec Department. They thought it would be a great idea because it sits right there on the trail, and it would be a continuation of the River Trail system and the breweries that are on the river, for example, the one that is existing in Kenmore. The hotel, the boutique hotel, there's still an appetite to do hotel development in the city of Bothell, and that would be a beautiful location for a small boutique hotel. Boutique hotels, in order to be profitable, are just 80 rooms, so it would be a very small hotel. And the third was for an event center. And the event center is a very, very broad term that encompasses a lot of different uses. It could be a community center, it could be a performing arts center, it could be a conference center. And we left it intentionally open so that you could explore a variety of different uses.
Fabulous, thank you. So I think, you know, in hearing from the community, I think the one thing that I heard, I did have a brief discussion with the city manager, was the opportunity is there to always be open for the community. It is a place for the community, but the things that we're looking at are inviting the community. It's not going to be locked off for one specific group. It's, we're looking at ideas. Right now, we're studying ideas. Is that correct?
That's correct. And the primary goal is to understand the feasibility. Because this is going to be a public-private partnership on a long-term land lease, whatever is developed there, we want to make sure that it's financially sustainable over several years. With regards to it being closed off, it is, the direction is, is that it will not be a private club of any kind. It will be open to the entire community. It will be an amenity for the community, plus, the goal is to create an amenity plus an attraction, a tourism attraction, for example.
Okay, fabulous. That answered my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm glad you pulled this, because I had the same questions. So we're, while we're studying those three things, it's, we still have possibilities for other things as well.
Absolutely. And in fact, the contract and the work with whatever consultant we work with will be open to other ideas.
Okay. And then, so if it's, let's say it ends up being a hotel. I assume the parking lot is still going to be available for people to park to access the trail, or I mean, the park.
You know, I am not, I'm hesitant to answer specific questions like that at this point because I simply do not know the answer or the history. I just want to reiterate that this is a feasibility study to understand the economics of a long-term use there, land use there.
Okay, I understand. I just want to make sure and put my marker out there that accessibility means the ability to access it with different modes of transportation.
So not just for the center, but for all public?
Right.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks.
And if you remember, council, that there's a deed on the property, and there are deed restrictions, and one of it is that accessibility to the public. And so that is the vision. It's a public-private partnership. We cannot sell the land. We have to lease it. And so what kind of public-private partnerships are available that can be sustainable? We don't want to go into a public-private partnership and have it fail three or five years later. That doesn't do anybody any good. So we want to look at what's economically viable there, but has that public component. And the reason we can't answer a lot of those questions is, we don't know what that's going to look like. So again, this feasibility study is the very, very, very first step of starting to study what potentially could happen on these four acres. And a very open, the community will be involved, it's a very open process, it's many years in the making still.
Thanks. I just, because I didn't know, I just wanted to make sure that I understood kind of where we're going. I think it's a great opportunity, and I'm really excited to see what can happen there. So thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. I think it's important, and I think Deputy Mayor, you may have said it, or you did yourself, talking about community involvement. So while this study is going on, is there a way to hear from the community as to what they might desire to see there? Because, you know, Wayne Land is very important to our community and to the members of our community. So is there a way for them to have a voice?
So I'm going to, I'm just going to leapfrog off what City Manager Phillips said, and that is, this is going to be a multiple-year project. In fact, I anticipate that this study, the feasibility and the community engagement is going to be a minimum of two years. So the first part is just, is just a financial feasibility study. Once we understand what the possibility is, that's when we go to the public and ask for their input on what they want to see. We'll provide them with some options at that time, but that will definitely be a public process. Then the third phase of that will be to send out for, so the second phase will be an RFQ to request qualifications for a potential builder. And then the third phase would be an RFP for that builder, developer, business owner who's willing to enter into a public-private partnership with the city.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm trying to think back to the Wayne Golf Course conversations, but the important part to me, at least as a region, what we've done usually when we have these conservation areas, we fence them off, don't let anybody in there. And one of the cool things about this project, which I think was a really important, I think, for the region, is that you can bring people into that, especially how it's kind of sitting up on a hill, these four acres, and you can look down into this huge restoration area that we preserved. And it's one of those opportunities, instead of just putting fences up and trying to protect it from other people getting in there, it's just a great opportunity to bring people and attracted. So I hope that that vision's kind of still there. I think it is with the council, that we wanted it to be, you know, outward facing, that people could be there and it really interacts or there's interchange between those four acres and the conservation effort that we have established.
Perfect.
So like a gun range wouldn't be a good idea. Okay. All right. So is there a motion to approve?
Yes, so moved.
All right, it's moved by Councilmember McNeil, second by Councilmember McAuliffe to approve the resolution authorizing City Manager to submit to the Port of Seattle the 2019 Economic Development Partnership Program city application. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, this past week was snowageddon or mageddon, or whatever we're calling it, is the first time that I've seen, there's probably thousands of people that were out there enjoying it, including the mayor, snowboarding. So I just want to say, it's great to be in this position, to have this opportunity, and I look forward to the excitement of seeing what the feasibility study brings.
Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
You missed me. I was on my cross-country skis. And the kids were having such a blast. It was so fun to see all the sledding and everything. I just, it warmed my heart. It was cold outside, but it was awesome, so.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, place your vote. All right, passes unanimously. We are moving along. And there we go. AB, is that right? Yeah, AB 19-026, Council Goal Scorecard for the 2019-2020 biennium. City Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So when I started with the city in 2017, you had already adopted your goals for the biennium, and I took the opportunity to develop a scorecard for you. So the last two years, I've been bringing back a quarterly scorecard to track the work that we've been doing as staff towards achieving the council's goals. I did that after I got here and just basically took what we were already doing and applied those, the work that was existing into strategic objectives and applied it to your goals. And this year, I thought it would be a good opportunity, the deputy mayor and I were meeting in our check-in, and she asked, you know, how is that developed and how does council have a role in developing those strategic objectives or approving those strategic objectives? I thought that was a great question. And so this year, I'm bringing it earlier as a proposed scorecard with proposed strategic objectives. So council has a chance to review the scorecard. Work has begun on much of this, and it's work that's already in place. Many of these goals are goals from your prior biennium, and it's, we just continue to work on your goals. But this is an opportunity for council to take a look at the scorecard, your 10 adopted goals, and then review the strategic objectives that we, as an executive team, have identified that we're going to be working on to achieve your goals. We did take quite a bit of time in January to meet as an ELT and to review this scorecard and to confirm that we have the capacity to be able to deliver all of these strategic objectives over the next two years. And we look forward to your feedback, whether we're hitting the mark and these are the things that you want us to work on in the next two years, or if you have some additional things. If you do, and we don't have the staff capacity to add them on top of what we've identified here, there may be a conversation on pulling some things off and replacing the things that you think are more important. Or if they're minor, there may be things we may just be able to add into the scorecard. It's really sort of based on a discussion and which items you would like to see potentially added in or changed out. The ELT is here to answer any questions. You'll see, we made a few changes for this biennium. One, we, everything is green because we're starting fresh. So we're starting off on schedule, on time. So as we move forward through the biennium, you'll see potentially some things turn yellow or red if we're struggling. And those are opportunities for us to share with the council an area that we might be struggling with and get direction, whether you want us to add additional resources or maybe stop working on that strategic objective. In the other, is we try to get more specific this time about target dates. So in the last set of scorecard, the last scorecard, we had some ongoing items, and we made the decision as the executive leadership team to transition those into what I would like to refer to as the machine. Or we put dates that you can see the dates that we anticipate accomplishing those strategic objectives. So just a few updates for this biennium. Again, the team is here to answer any questions and be able to help the council as we finalize the scorecard. And then you'll see this on a quarterly basis to be able to let you know how we're doing on your goals.
So I had a little tidbit to add. This is the right part of the agenda, I believe. But, so one of the things that we've done as a council, we decided to take off the projected agenda as an agenda item. So these, as a substitution, one of the things that I talked to the city manager about was on a quarterly basis, this will come back. And so if there are things that we want the staff to refocus on, then those would be the opportunities. Instead of having every meeting, we talk about the projected agenda, and basically nobody puts anything on it. So we're hoping this will be a little bit better communication tool with the council, with staff about, kind of, it's basically the work plan. So, you know, if we keep piling things onto the work plan, some things need to come off and that type of thing. So it'll be more of a quarterly basis discussion between us and the city staff. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And Deputy Mayor?
So I had a few things that I wanted to ask council if they were interested in. I'm most interested in the sustainability goals. And I had three things that I was mulling to see whether or not council would be interested in. One would be 100% renewable energy resolution. There's a bill right now. I think it would be timely for us if we're interested, and I think it's on our legislative program, to pass that resolution to give some extra oomph to the legislature. So that's one thing. The second thing is, we, I noticed the plastic bag ban is on the scorecard. There's a plastic bag ban in the Senate, but it's only for plastic bags. And I wondered how people feel. I know Lake Forest Park just passed a single-use plastic. I know Lake Forest Park just passed a single-use plastic ban. And so even if the Senate bill passed, it wouldn't be addressing the single-use, like straws and that sort of thing. And so I was curious, you know, where council fell kind of on maybe going a little bit further, like Lake Forest Park did. Apparently, they have a very good bill, and so, or ordinance. And so I'm hoping that it wouldn't be a lot of work, but it would be worthwhile for us to maybe even just look at it. And then the third thing was, I'm very interested in K4C. And I'm trying to figure out how to explain what it is. It's basically, cities around the region sign on, and it's a climate action, strategic climate action plan. And when I looked at the map, it was basically everyone around the lake except for Newcastle and Bothell, and Kenmore just became a member. And I know, I sat down with some K4C staff to ask about Bothell possibly joining in. There are a lot of concerns about the amount of work that it would take for staff. And I think that may have been true in the past, but I, when I spoke with Kenmore and with Mercer Island electeds and told them, you know, kind of the dilemma we were in, they said, "Well, we don't have any staff." And so I was wondering if, maybe not in 2019, maybe in 2019, we could look at what it would take to become a member and have staff assess that and then put it on the goal for, the goals or council scorecard for 2020 to maybe try to tackle that. So those were the three things. I would love to have feedback from council on how everyone else feels about it. So the, one was the plastic bag ban, whether we do wait for the state to pass something or whether we look at maybe Lake Forest Park's ordinance, which deals with beyond plastic bags. The second was the 100% renewable energy resolution, and the third was the K4C. So if anyone's interested, I'd love to hear what everyone else thinks.
Who'd like to go next? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. I know that this is kind of an opportunity to be sure that we are addressing different issues. And I do support the deputy mayor and ordinance for plastic bags. I think that's really critically important, at least taking one step now. I know that Lake Forest Park has gone a little further, but I think that we should bring that up within this docket, 2019-2020. Also, I do want to, when I look at the scorecard for culture, it says to instill values that promote exceptional customer service, teamwork, innovation, safety, and ethics in the workplace. And I think we need to add something in there. We now have a diversity committee. I think we need to address the diversity of our community and be sure that we keep that as a top goal in our scorecards as well.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Zorn?
These are kind of big wants, so if they don't get traction, chances are, you'll be hearing them again. But before I segue to that, I would like us to explore more of K4C, for council to get more familiar with what they do and what their objective is. These are my wants. I don't know when we'll get traction on them. One is that I understand Parks is already on this, and we've had some communication about memorial trees. There's a number of memorial trees around Bothell, and I think Parks is working on creating a way to identify memorial trees with plaques, because right now, they sit on benches. And they're going to come up with something that will make it easy for people to identify trees, and I think that's important. So that's probably not a big thing that we need to give a full attention, because that ball's already rolling. But the other thing is, is that I really am chewing on how do we connect? And I think Councilmember McAuliffe talked about making more connections with, what committee were you talking about?
The diversity committee.
No, there was another committee. I took notes. Anyway, our committees that are, our boards and commissions that are, that we have here, these next two things are addressed with our objective of being more community-connected. And I think our boards and commission members would appreciate venues to get to know each other, to have, be more familiar with us, where if we bump into each other, we can have meaningful conversations beyond, they look familiar, but I'm not quite sure where I place them. So I'm not sure exactly how intense that ought to be, but I am looking for ways that would be agreeable for people to make those connections within the boards and commissions and city council. Partly because it's a brewing, not only doing the job that we need to do today, it also starts laying those connections, because our boards and commissions finger out into the community. And that's how we pull people in to become sitting here at the dais. And we become a more cohesive city when we understand each other. And I think that's something that we ought to look for small ways to foster. The last thing that I have is that the newer, older communities in Bothell that cropped up mostly in the 80s and 90s, they have their own monuments of, this is this neighborhood. But we have old neighborhoods like Maywood and Beckstrom. I have an addition, list here. Woody's First Edition, possibly Ross Road, Sunrise, Promontory, Munger Edition. Does anybody know where Munger Edition is? Shelton View. And I don't think that we need to go through creating, identifying them as historical districts, but they are definitely neighborhoods. And it would be a nice way to codify a way that if a community says, "We want to identify ourselves as Beckstrom Hill," that the city has, okay, it's going to cost you X number of dollars for us to get a sign printed and install it and put it on an existing signage. I'm, you know, I'm talking about a rectangular metal square. It's uniform in color. It doesn't have to say historic. Maybe it just says, "Maywood Hills." So that people, when they're going around Bothell, know who their community is when they say, "I'm from this area. I'm from Beckstrom." You go to the Bothell Cemetery and you see Beckstrom's buried there. You understand that connection. And even new people to Bothell love finding ways to have roots that they can put into Bothell. Bothell fosters want, people wanting to put their roots in. So down the road, I would like to find an easy way for communities to say, "I want a hill that, a sign that identifies our, our community in a not-big, not-obtrusive way, that's uniform with the rest of the city, that doesn't intrude into public space." So if that doesn't get traction here, you'll hear me down the road say, "Ah, there she is with that sign thing." So, anyway, those are, those are my wants.
Quite the wishlist, dude. I know. Does anybody else have additions they would like to see added to, that's an opportunity to speak? Councilmember Olson?
I don't have anything to add as far as items. I do want to comment on the dates. When I was reviewing this, I did notice that, and I think that is very helpful. It also seems like there's a little more detail on here. I know definitely on the public safety strategy, I like how you're really detailing out the safety levy, the fire stations, and the hiring. So I think that, that level of detail makes it very easy to track this and just quarterly updates on that. So yeah, great job with that. Thanks.
Anybody else would like to add? No, good. Oh, you do? Okay. Councilmember McNeil?
You can't leave me out now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had a question on the Parks, I think it's page 105, with the, working with King County to wrap up negotiations. Is that one complete?
I think it's mostly complete. I think there was something that rolled into 2019, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure what the details of that are.
All right, I was wishing we could just check that one right off the list.
I don't know if, yeah. No, we went pretty thorough. There's, if it's on the list, something rolled over.
Something, something has to be done.
I just don't know specifically what it is.
Okay, thank you. So on, Councilmember McAuliffe brought up the diversity committee. I think that's an important thing to have on top of our list for multiple reasons. One being, I know that we have talked in-depth about neighborhood groups and bringing our community together and having a sense of community. So the fabulous work the city's doing in-house, I'd like to see that. We make that a priority in continuing that work that we're doing out within our community. That leads also to what Councilmember Zorn's talked about, being out in neighborhood groups and filling a part of a neighborhood group and signs. Not quite sure about the signs, but I think that it's important that we all have a sense of where we're from and our little domain, where we are within the bigger community at large. And I think it's important, if we can find a way to bring our community to us through different types of programs. I would really love to see us, as a council, as a city, work together to find partnerships for fields, for our youth in the area, places for the kids to go. You know, not all kids want to go sledding all the time. I know it's fun for Snow Aggedon for a couple of days, but we need places when they can't be outside on fields, places for them to go indoors and be active as well. So I'd like for us to spend some time working on that. Seniors, we heard a little bit about, you know, some of the work that's being done, you know, when seniors, my mom recently, excuse me, broke her hip and was in one of those cares. But I think it goes much further than that. I think it, just looking holistically at how we take care of our seniors within our community here. It goes along the lines with affordable housing and other things. What can we do to help the seniors within our community? So those are some of the things that are important. I, you know, as far as the plastic ban, the deputy mayor brought up K4C, renewable energy. I'm interested in all those things. I just need to know a little bit more information about them. I will do research on those. And so I think that, you know, to me, I love this process. I think it's open, it's transparent. We can, we can see what our goals are, we can work on. And I look forward to opportunity, maybe having tweaks throughout, you know, based on the workload of the city. So I think that's what it's all about, is us at least talking about it and having the conversation. So thank you.
So I'm going to be the wet blanket. From what I understand, talking to the city manager, correct me if I'm incorrect, but the stuff that they gave us, basically, this is their work plan, there isn't a whole lot of room of staff time outside of kind of what you've committed to in the draft that you presented to us. So I'm not quite sure what to do with that. I mean, we got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 additional requests tonight from council.
So if I can make a clarification, so for the deputy mayor and councilmember McAuliffe, the single-use plastics is the single-use bags and other items. So that is included in this item. So you can take that one off. We're good. The memorial trees, that's something that's in our work plan. You're welcome to put it on this if you'd like to see some timing, but it is something that we've recognized, and it's an in-house project that we think is important for the community. So that will get done, hopefully, in the next two years. So those two at least.
Now, we got nine more. So we could do this a couple of different ways. Would you like to kind of, in your one-on-ones, meet with councilmembers, kind of flesh out what it is exactly they would like to see and then come back? Or do you want us to just go down the list now as a council and talk about each of these nine things?
Well, I think it would be helpful to know if there's four councilmembers who are interested in having these, any of the items added to the, to the strategic objectives. Then the opportunity to go back, talk to the team, and see sort of where that fits. We've talked about neighborhoods before, and I can try to give you a little bit of feedback. That's a, that's a big job. So one of the focuses we have for this biennium is our communications program. So we really want to enhance our communication. We really want to have that two-way communication with our community. A neighborhood's program is to really have something that is, that I think people would define as a true neighborhood outreach, neighborhood programs, is a full-time person, at a minimum a half-time person. It's someone going into the neighborhoods, it's identifying homeowners' associations, it's really building that, that connection and, yeah, connecting with a neighborhood. So that's a big one to take on. So I think sort of what your expectations, if you have an interest in that, sort of what your expectations are with that. Because we feel like with, we only have one communications officer, we don't have a community outreach person, we don't have anything like that that's sort of for the general neighborhoods. The signage is, I'm not quite sure how to approach a project like that. It's something I can talk to the team about. If it's on private property and it meets the sign ordinance, a neighborhood can do that. If you're looking for something that connects it to the city, that's a different, we'd have to design a program. Neighborhoods would come to us, there'd be some formulated sign, or they, I'm not really sure. So I would need some, some sort of feedback from the council of, one, if four members support that, and then what, what you're looking for. Yeah, and the others, I mean, the board and commission events, I mean, to host a meet and greet twice a year at 4:00 before a council meeting, I don't think that's, that's difficult to organize. I think those things are easy for us to absorb in.
Could you, what about the diversity committee external? I guess that's, that could be all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think it's sort of expectation. I hope you saw the welcome signs on the doors when you came in. The diversity committee is first sort of starting, we want to be a welcoming community. We're sort of focusing internally, just, it just started, so sort of figuring out what that looks like. But it's there, and so, again, it's sort of what expectations are, but it's formed, and I think we're looking for initiatives. But it's, it's, staff members appointed on top of the work that they're hired to do, just like the safety committee, just like the wellness committee. This is another committee that employees have been asked or have volunteered to serve on above their normal work responsibilities. So we're fairly limited in what we're able to deliver, but we're, the group's got a lot of energy and they're excited to do things. I just sort of need to understand what expectations are for what you're looking for.
Okay. How about the K4C?
We did, staff did meet with a couple councilmembers in the K4C group, so I've heard a wide variety of feedback from that, all the way from, it takes a full-time person and it's a massive initiative. So this is new, that Kenmore and Mercer Island have said they joined and have no staff. But I think that if you're going to join something and you're going to have an initiative, ultimately, someone's going to ask you to do something. There's going to be work as a result of that. That one, I'm probably the most concerned about in the sense of what it can snowball into, but happy to have them come and make a presentation and sort of identify what those things could be.
The 100% renewable energy resolution?
I think that's just a policy.
That's just a resolution?
That's just a resolution.
Okay. So we talked about neighborhood groups programs, field partnerships?
That's a bigger one. I'd need some, some expectations and sort of feedback from council that's, that's working with those groups, that's negotiating potential public-private partnerships, what fields. Certainly has tremendous opportunity, but that's, that's a big lift.
Good. And then the last one, this is in my words, holistically, look at how we serve seniors. That's how I wrote it.
We don't have, again, I'd need direction on what that looks like. We have a senior center. We have councilmembers that serve on that board. We're actually very engaged with them at the moment. I don't know what that would look like. I would need some help in understanding what the expectations would be.
Okay. So it sounds like we, it would probably make sense to, for the Lisa ones, that you needed to kind of understand a little more about what the expectations would be to not try to decide as a board right now, or council right now?
If there's not interest, I mean, I could, you can do it a couple of ways. I can meet individually with those councilmembers and then bring back some sort of, I don't, I don't.
Right. At the next quarterly?
Yeah. I mean, I could bring it back with the next scorecard update. I think most importantly is, are there four of you who support that initiative, so putting work into it is, is supported?
Okay.
And really support it, not just like four votes to support it, to move forward, to put staff work into it.
Okay. So it sounds like we needed to do that now. Okay. So it sounds like we needed to do that now?
I think that would be helpful, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then just to reiterate, as presented, the scorecard was a full load. So keep that in mind when we, when we take, I'm not going to do like motions and stuff. We're just going to go down the, the council. That's okay there, attorney? Yeah, okay, cool. All right, so let's go down the list. Expanding the Diversity Committee externally. You guys want to speak to them too? Okay, Councilmember McCullough?
I just, really, we already have a Diversity Committee. I just want to call it out on the scorecard so that it's there, so that we highlight it. It isn't going to take more time or more energy. It's just saying that we recognize the need for us to include in our culture the diversity of our population within our city.
Okay, so not additional work? You just wanted it to actually just be physically on the scorecard?
That's right.
Okay, I think everybody's okay with that, I'm sure, right? Yeah, heads rolling. Okay, good. We'll take that one off the list, all right? Or just add it to the scorecard if you could. K4C? Do you want to start off with the, have, ask K4C to come and present to us? Is that something we can do? Looks like, yeah, council will do that. Okay, 100%, renewable energy resolution? And so that's a new resolution?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
So there's already a resolution in, that's, a group came to me with. So it's just a matter of, I think, probably getting it out to the whole council so they can read it ahead of time and let Jennifer know if we're interested, or do we have to vote on it? Normally resolutions we don't vote on, so I wasn't sure the process.
Yeah, we, we have to vote on resolution.
Oh, okay.
It's the body. If you're thinking of proclamation.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I did, I maxed them out.
If you want a proclamation.
So I have one, I have one that we just need to react to, basically.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that, though? I haven't really asked the council. Noting, to get to the resolution? Yeah, well, it's effort, so they got to put the resolution together and put it in the.
What I'm saying is, we already have one written.
Right.
Yeah. So they just, everyone needs to be able to read it.
Okay, there's a majority on reading the resolution. So the opportunities for boards and commissions to meet with council, where are we at with that? Is that something we want to add to the plate? Councilmember McCullough?
Well, I thought what city manager Jennifer Phillips said was probably a likely thing that would be worth, would be not so much worth, but would be good, is to maybe two times a year have a reception before we meet here and just meet and greet. I think that's a really good idea.
Is that something we can manage? Okay, does council feel good about doing that? Yep, okay. That's majority, and then, where do I leave off? Neighborhood identification and signs. So how does the council feel about that, Councilmember McCullough?
So I'm familiar with the fact that when I wanted to name a street after someone, which was McGlore Lane, you know, I just made a request and it, and it just happened. The city did it. So when we, and I do believe you'll remember this more than anybody else, the Cougar Lane, Cougar Road, that was kind of brought on by a city council member. Del Spivey. And it happened. So if a neighborhood wants something, can't they just make the request and see if there's enough energy there to follow through? Isn't that kind of the way it works?
I think a street sign, are you talking about a street sign?
Well, I'm just saying they should be a contributor as well, though. They shouldn't just be able to come and say, we want a sign. They should say, as a neighborhood, we're going to help and partner with the city to do this, right?
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the vision is for the council. They would, I don't know if they're, if you're looking for some, if you go into some cities, like they have pre-formatted, pre-designed neighborhood signs. So somebody would draw that up and then the community would come and say, yes, we want to fundraise to do that. Here's the cost of the sign, here's the cost of the installation. There needs to be a program that somebody develops with the staff time to research that, bring it to council, approve it to, by council, and then as those neighborhoods desire to have those signs, then someone would, would be the point person to be able to do that. I think you're referring to just a change in a street sign. That's, that's very different than a neighborhood. This is a different, it's a full new program.
So I guess I can't support a full new program. I think that that would be staff time that we, would be difficult for me to support.
Okay. And I would think too, I mean, I'm thinking about Seattle, they have those neighborhood things, the signs, like Fremont's got its own sign, and so does Capitol Hill and so on. I think it, it would be an interesting thing. I don't know if we would just kind of want to wait here and, for neighborhoods to come to us and say, hey, we raised the money for the sign, and don't forget those, signs need to be maintained. They don't just kind of just sit there and, or, or fine after you just install it. And they're, they're actual an asset and you have to replace it and you have to clean them and maintain them and stuff. So I think it's a bigger, bigger undertaking. I think if we did it, I'd rather do it for the whole city instead of just kind of waiting for somebody to see their neighboring neighborhood have one and call us and say, well, why don't I have one? Because that'll just cause a PR problem. I'd rather we just did it if we're going to do it. And I think that's not really in our, well, it's not in our budget, and it would take some time to even get it off the ground, so. Deputy Mayor?
Is there anything stopping neighborhoods from doing that themselves? I mean, I live in a newer neighborhood, but we have a sign that just came with, you know, with the neighborhood and, and we, you know, it gets damaged, we replace it or whatever.
That's correct. That's what I said. So if there's private property and, and it meets our sign ordinance, a neighborhood can put up a sign. Absolutely.
Okay.
So what do you stand on?
I, I mean, I like the idea because I think it would build community. I just, I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around how it would work and, and whether or not we have the staff time to do it. So I'm, I'm supportive of the idea in general. I just, it's the, the details, the devil's in the details.
Councilmember Zorn?
I don't need it done tomorrow. I just would like it to kind of fester and, you know, to, to brew and, you know, and, and allow people to mull on what that might look like. It'd be nice if it was a standard shape. I think that would kind of set Bothell apart as being a sum of great, you know, of smaller parts, a great sum of smaller parts. But it would be nice to have, you know, if, if all were reduced to is putting a little sign on top of an existing street sign, that's better than nothing. But it would be nice down the road if we could come up with a standard sign that's probably, I don't know, 12 inches by 18 inches, that could attach to an existing, an existing pole. Does not happen, need to happen tomorrow. I can bring it up six months from now and see what, you know, people's thoughts are on. Because I, I think that the communities at large of Bothell would enjoy having that to mark off their hills, especially since we have some very, very old communities that have been here for over 100 years.
Does anybody else have a input on doing it or not? We, we have three people that have weighed in. Two in not in favor, one, or two, actually, it's four, two in favor, two not in favor. The rest of you are speechless. There we go. Councilmember Olson?
I'd like Councilmember Zorn's just to bring it up quarterly and develop traction the old-fashioned way. But no, I, I think it's a good idea overall, but yeah, I think it just needs to kind of grow legs on its own and, and develop naturally and just kind of work its way into the schedule and the budget on its own time.
Okay. That's, that's kind of a no for now? Nope, okay, there we go. All right, so it's no for now. All right, moving on to neighborhood groups programs. Councilmember McNeil, that was you? Is that kind of the same thing, it's along those same lines?
Yeah, I think, because I think that is a priority of this entire council, but we don't have the staff time with all the other stuff on our plate right now. I'm okay with that. Going to the future, we're going to continue to talk about it. We're going to continue to talk about our community. So not having that on this goal sheet right now, I don't think is, I, I know it's on everybody's mind, so I would be okay if it's not on the, the goal sheet.
Everybody else okay with that? Okay, cool. Field partnerships?
So this one, in looking back at page 105, I think this, this, the field opportunities and partnerships, I believe falls under the complete major 10-year deal anyway. So if we can just, you know, I don't know if it's underrepresented, underserved, but for the, the greater good of the Bothell community, I think we could maybe, if there's a way to tweak the language or whatever and get that in there, I'm, I'm super hopeful that we, I know this council would probably support it, but I'd like to get the feedback from everybody.
So would you be comfortable with that, just being a conversation you have with the city manager about the pros plan? Just to kind of feather it out, are you talking about like building new fields with public-private partnerships? Is that kind of, are you talking about?
Yeah, I think it's a, I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, mayor.
That's okay.
I think it's a combination of, of that, but I think it's more to the point of what we heard about our field, the status of our fields now and in the future. And we are going to need to find ways to fund these fields in the future. And I think this identifies looking at a holistic plan for 10 years and a possible future parks levy. So ensuring that we're continuing to talk about field opportunities, partnerships, kind of falls in line with that section already, but just making sure that we, we talk about fields in that section as well.
Okay. So that's something we can handle with the existing line item there? Is everybody comfortable with that, exploring more of a public-private partnerships with our fields? Yeah, okay, everybody's good with that. Okay, so seniors, I have this down as your, your, what you wanted, Councilmember McNeil.
So this, this might just be me, as the city manager alluded to, I'm on the NPRSA and we already do contribute to the Senior Center locally here. So this is just me making sure that it's in front of us on a regular basis. It's not a specific ask. And I'm okay with it not being on there because, again, I've had conversations with everybody out here, how important seniors are to us, and making sure that we have programs in place, being on human services. We give a lot to the Senior Center already. So I think the city manager wanted to say something as well.
What we could do is we could add the NPRSA because as the three of us have experienced in recent NPRSA meetings, there are some fairly significant financial challenges facing that board. And since the council has two seats and an alternate, it might be a great way to report out to council the work that we're doing. How about if we add that?
I think that would be fabulous. Thank you.
Council's good with that? Yeah, everybody's good. Okay. We'd made it. Not so bad. Okay. Think, are we supposed to approve them or it was just for discussion, right?
Yeah, I mean, you don't need to, the recommendation was to adopt it, so if you want to adopt it with the, the changes as directed to the city manager, it just sort of formalizes that this is my direction and becomes basically my work plan for the year, two years ahead.
Yeah, we better do that. I think city attorney get mad at us if we didn't, right? Says so. All right.
If you take some action on it, you can approve it or not, but.
So I move we adopt the 2019-2020 council goals scorecard as amended, oh, and strategic objectives as amended.
Second.
It's moved by deputy mayor, second by councilor Agnew to adopt the 2019-20, I'm sorry, 2019-2020 council goals scorecard and strategic objectives as amended by the majority council tonight. Is there any discussion on the motion? City number, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Passes unanimously. All right, we are on to, how are we doing for time? Should we take a break now? Yeah, timeout. All right, so we're going to take a break. Council will be back at eight o'clock, eight o'clock. All right, the Bothell City Council is back from break. We're going to take up AB 19-027, Community Development 2019 docket. But before that, I just want to point out to everybody it's 8:00 PM right now. We have about an hour and a half of, to two hours of executive session to have at the end of the meeting. So that puts us almost at 10 o'clock right now. So if we could do our best to try to get through this docket, that would be appreciated. And then the council conversations is actually on the agenda too. So I don't know how chit-chatting we're going to want to be tonight during the council conversations because we're going to have literally an hour and a half to two hours of.
Do you want to extend the meeting now? Or do you want to wait till, we just have to remember when you go into executive session to also extend the meeting?
All right.
Or do it now, either way?
Yeah, let's, let's do it now.
I move we extend the meeting to 9:30. Is that enough time?
Nope.
Okay, 11. I say 11.
All right, it's moved and by council member, deputy mayor, and seconded by, was that you? McNeil? Under your breath. Extend the meeting at 11 o'clock. Is there any discussion on the motion? Say none, place your vote.
Passes seven zero.
All right, passes unanimously. I'll hand the floor over to Mr. Ketterman.
Thank you, mayor. Members of the council, good evening. So tonight we've got the proposed 2019 docket. We're going to try to go through this fairly quickly in the interest of time. So just to give you a quick overview of what we want to cover this evening, so we're going to go through the proposed docket, we'll do an overview, we'll, we'll hit some highlights. We're not going to go through each one in detail as far as that, part of that initial presentation. Then there's a, a stopping point for public comment, if you want to take any more public comment in addition to what you've heard already. Then we'll come back to the council for your discussion and direction on any changes you want to make to the docket. There are some specific questions that we'll have for you. One of them has to do with the North Shore School District application requirement. That's in addition to the prioritization. And then we are asking you to take action this evening on the docket. This is actually good follow-up to the discussion we just had about the scorecard because this is our mini-work program, if you will, for the strategic planning and landmark preservation part of the community development department. So why are we doing this? One is because the state law requires us to. We have, under the Growth Management Act, we're required to put together a docket of any private requests that come in from individuals or other agencies or entities. So we keep track of those, we keep a list of those, and then we bring those to you as part of our overall docket. So in Bothell, we've expanded on that. We throw a lot of other things into the mix because we make it all part of our work program so that we can track everything that needs to be done or that has been a priority by council or others. So we can talk about those and put together our work program for the next, for the next year. We are looking for council direction. This isn't just our work program, it also affects the work of the boards and commissions that we work with. So that's the Planning Commission, the Shorelines Board, and the Landmark Preservation Board, as well as the council itself. Most everything you see on here, we'll be coming back to at some point when we're ready for action on those. This is a graphic that Gary Hassler used last year in the presentation about the docket, and I thought it was very helpful. It actually shows the product that most people see, which is the tip of the iceberg that's above the waterline, and the amount of work that goes into it. So you notice several of these items have a lot of hours associated with them. That's because of the, the complexity of these, the amount of time it takes to really get through them and, and work them through the process. There's coordination with other, other staff, other departments, sometimes outside agencies, and then going through the, the public process, the Planning Commission, and through the city council. So there's a lot of time involved. This also, could also be a metaphor for the, the amount of resources we have. So the amount above the waterline are the resources we have to do the work, and below the line is the work that needs to be done. So a couple of ways to look at that. Just to give you a quick overview, this is the docket from 2018 that the council approved. Want to give you an update on what we've gotten done, what we're still working on. So this page, and I apologize, I've had a bunch, a lot of things on the single pages, or this, that have about four times the slides that we do tonight. So you'll notice the, the first three items there were mandatory. Those are all still underway. We'll be wrapping up this year. They'll note, you'll notice they're on the 2019 docket. The next group, we've completed some, we have some others that are underway. Basically, we have either started or finished everything on this page with one exception, and that's the increasing the number of lots in a short plat from four to nine. So everything that is still underway or was not done last year, which includes everything on this page, these are all things that the council put as a preference for 2019 for consideration. The direction you gave last year was not necessarily to do these in 2019, but to bring them back for further consideration. Again, with two exceptions, numbers 13 and 16 were actually taken off the list by the council last year. So those do not appear on the, the docket for this year. But everything else that's either underway or was deferred is still on the docket. So just a little bit about the table that you, the tables you're going to see tonight. So the number in the left-hand column, that's the priority that staff is recommending. We've listed all of these in priority order. The next column has the source, that's the impetus, where did these come from, as well as the current status. And we have four categories that we're working with, similar to what you saw last year. So we have the mandatory, those things were required to do by either the federal or state government or some other statute that we're having to comply with. Anything that a direct, is in direct support of a council goal. Several of the things we're doing support different council goals, but there are a couple that are directly supportive of two of the council goals, and we'll talk about those. Things that you have previously initiated and possibly deferred, or that were started, and then things that are new this year. So we've identified them in those four categories. Then we have a brief description of the task, our proposed timing, what we're recommending, either 2019 or 2020, and in some cases even beyond that. And then our best estimate of the number of hours that staff, just the community development staff, just our strategic planning staff, will be devoting to do that work for whatever year that's proposed for. So you see all that in the table. So these are the categories. Again, we talked about mandatory, the council goals, previously initiated and new. The table on the left gives you the hours. We did an estimate of how many hours we think are available this year from, from staff, and this is just our strategic planning staff, which consists of Dave Boyd and Bruce Blackburn. They're here tonight, they're going to do part of the presentation. I thought it'd be helpful for you to see all of the resources that are involved. We're also going to talk about the landmark preservation work program tonight, and Sarah Desimone, our landmark preservation consultant, is also here, and she'll present that part. One of the things I wanted to highlight for the council on this, you'll notice the graphic on the right has the same information as the table, but it's displayed graphically. So you can see the green lines are the things that we are recommending for 2019, and the vast majority of hours are spent on council goal and mandatory tasks. So those are really the focus of the work that we're doing. We have some hours for new and previously initiated, and then you'll see there are quite a few that are deferred, both previous and new. And, and you'll see the entire list this evening. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dave Boyd, who's going to talk about the first set of items. Dave?
Thank you, and good evening. So this slide is showing the mandatory items and items one through three, the shoreline master program update, the critical areas code amendments. Master Program update, the critical areas code amendments, and the small cells, small cell wireless amendments. Those are all underway and will be coming to council shortly. So those are carries overs from last year. Four includes two comprehensive plan amendments. A, the amendments to implement the public safety levy and add fire stations 42 and 45 to the capital facilities element, and B to incorporate the bike plan within the transportation element of the comp plan. And then five, the Buildable Lands report. We just found out today that the King County has moved their deadline for this up by a full year to the end of June of next year. So this is one that we definitely need to start tackling this year, and that work will also set the stage for the work that we need to do to prepare for the 2020 census. And then on to council goal priorities. A major work program for this year is the continuing work on the Canyon Park Plan. That's well underway. In fact, we've just started in the last couple of months Phase Two, which constitutes a major strategic planning effort for 2019. In fact, this is the, has the most hours of any single item. And then as we're working on Phase Two, we're also exploring ways to get state funding to move on and do Phase Three to complete that, that planning effort. Item seven are housing strategy implementation items that we're carrying on from the adoption of the housing strategy last year. A will be a continuation of efforts that we started to remove barriers to, I'm sorry, A will be a part of the Canyon Park item that I just spoke about. B will be a continuation of efforts to remove impediments to creating accessory dwelling units. And then C is a very key element of the housing strategy plan and will complement the requirements that council adopted for, for starters, for two areas within the downtown suburbia with a key incentive for affordable housing through multifamily tax exemptions. And that will apply, it will be something that could apply in many areas of the city. Then moving on to item eight, these are process improvements. Items A through H, we're bundling together to officially handle those. If we treated each one as a separate amendment, that would take vastly more time and effort. And so we propose to bundle those together and bring them together forward this year. And then two items that we are, we are proposing as staff to defer to 2020. Eight I, increasing the size of short plats from four to nine. And one key reason for that is that there is a move afoot at the state to actually require communities to do this, and that could change what our approach would be to that code amendment. So we propose to hold that off till 2020 and see what the state law is. And then eight J, update the regulations regarding residential care facilities. That is one that we do need to do, but it's, it hasn't been a major impediment. We can, can work around that, and just the hours required to that just didn't, didn't, in our opinions, fit into this year's docket. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce to take you through items nine and up.
Evening, council members. Item number nine includes four items. A and B, which A is, of course, revised public open space regulations within the downtown area, and B, which is historic regulations regarding Title 22, basically preserve historic Main Street provisions. Those are both underway and scheduled to be done in 2019. Item C, which is remove the general GDC three-story overlay and add an affordable housing provision, and the parking regulations Phase Two study, which is not funded currently, are both proposed for 2020 at this point. Item number 10, there's basically the placeholder we have, the council has begun discussions about potential plan and code amendments regarding the city-owned properties within the downtown area. You can see we do not have an estimate yet. We're awaiting some more discussion and direction from the city council. We do have the amendments related to sale and development of the, of the city-owned parcels scheduled for 2019, again, based upon what council identifies. And number B, which is an update to the planned action environmental impact statement, there may be some additional capacity analysis we may have to implement. We would propose to do that in 2020. Number 11 is a new property owner request, reviving nursing homes and rehabilitation facilities as a conditional use permit or a CUP within residential zones. Currently, they are prohibited within residential zones, which makes them unable to expand or make themselves larger or change in any substantial way. We are actually proposing that be done in 2019. It is not a hugely involved process, but it does apply citywide. I wanted to identify that one. Number 12 is a request from the North Shore School District regarding the collection of school impact mitigation fees. The North Shore School District came to us last year when we were doing the updated impact fees and identified that they would like the city to collect those fees instead of the current process where the school district collects the fees and then certifies to the city of Bothell that they have those fees collected. Number 13 is a comprehensive plan and code amendment regarding private streets. We are getting some more requests for private streets. We are proposing this be deferred to 2020. And I forgot to do an important thing here. You see the little stop sign at the end? That identifies where we have got to the maximum number of staff hours. This is the number of items that we could complete in 2019 with our current resources. So I'm going to go ahead and continue on because we do have these discussion items that we want to have. Again, number 13 was a comprehensive plan and code amendment regarding private streets. We will investigate that, we're proposing to do that in 2020. Number 14 is signed code amendments regarding US Supreme Court decision, and this has been on the docket for a couple of years now, regarding sign regulations based upon content. And again, we are proposing that that be postponed to 2020. We don't seem to have any real issue here. Number 15 is a comprehensive update to the landscape regulations. The council's aware that we're mostly kind of a suburban style. The Planning Commission identified this as something that was pretty important, that they really did think that this was a key element that they would like to have done in 2019. However, our recommendation is for 2020. You can see it's quite a heavy lift from a staff hours standpoint. Number 16 is code amendments relating to adult entertainment related to espresso stands. And this is something that the council initiated in 2018, and that's basically quite a heavy lift for us as well, but we're also proposing that to be 2020. That would include a lot of legal provisions as well. Number 17 is process amendments for city council review of proposed parkland dedications. This is something the mayor identified. We are proposing that to be in 2020. However, I want to identify that we think we can address most of that through some better procedural provisions on staff. We can just set up some procedures that work better. We don't necessarily have to do any extensive code amendments. We think that we can kind of address most of those concerns through that better processing on our own staff level. Number 18 is another property owner request regarding a planning code amendment that would basically increase the capacity of a property just off of 187th Street. And essentially what it is, it's a very small site, but we're proposing that we postpone that to 2023, which is the next periodic update of our comprehensive plan. Makes a lot of sense to do it at that timeframe just because we're going to be looking at all those type of factors. We'll have our buildable lands information, we'll have our, our other provisions, including our targets from the county. So that might be, make a lot of sense to do that as well. Number 19 is a plan and code amendment regarding up in the Nike Hill area, which is basically at 228th Street and Meridian Avenue. And this is an old Planning Commission recommendation from back in 2016. This is a holdover from many, several years ago. The Planning Commission did have a recommendation, and it's basically been on hold for a while here. And that was basically would apply a residential activity center within, one of our activity centers within the community. We're also proposing that be deferred to 2023 as part of the major plan update. Again, that's the best time for us to, to consider and review the potential for increased densities within the community. Number 20 is code amendments regarding safe injection sites. Right now, we're going to recommend that we remove that from the docket, and primarily because King County's got a real strong effort right now that they've been going through, and they're going to be coming to the cities eventually and identifying, look, here is a program that we would like you to adopt. It makes a lot more sense to have a much more coordinated approach than just individually cities trying to take this on themselves. So we are recommending that we kind of put this off the docket and wait for King County to come to us and have their program going through. Finally, we have a Shorelines Board discussion that has held regarding, right now, Shoreline Master Program allows some reduction in buffers in exchange for certain enhancement to buffer areas. And the Shoreline Board was going to have a discussion regarding this item. However, the snow kind of impacted that discussion, so they didn't really have a chance to forward a true recommendation from the board itself. And so that makes it a little bit hard for us to come forward and say, yes, the board identifies this as a real specific item. We believe it's probably, considering all of the items that we've got going on right now and the work plan, that it's best to consider this as part of the next update to the Shoreline Master Program, which is scheduled for 2025. So that stops my section. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Desamone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm going to go back one here. Okay. So landmark preservation is funded a little bit differently than the rest of the planning docket. I'm a part-time consultant, I have 10 hours a week to spend on landmark preservation. About half that time is spent doing landmark preservation staff things, processing applications in the planning department, coordinating with other historic preservation projects locally, and other things like that. The other half is spent on projects that are initiated by the Landmark Preservation Board. So on here, we have four items on the work plan this year. We have the, the post-World War II Historic Resources Inventory Update, which is mandated by the Department of Archaeology, excuse me, Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. We're a certified local government community, which means that we're required to maintain an inventory of all of our historic resources in town. There are hundreds more than we have time to actually go out and document. So we have been doing an update to this since 2013, and we're kind of at a good point where we're going to be able to sort of end it up this year, at least in one big chunk. Half of this is grant-funded, so just part of my regular hours go toward this, and the rest is grant-funded. The second item was initiated last year. The Landmark Preservation Board received a grant from ForeCulture to fully fund this project. It is a study of the downtown special review area. It is going to look at how many buildings in the area are register-eligible, how many of those are eligible for certain financial incentives for rehabilitation, things like that. And it's also going to identify any potential districts. We're also going to review the downtown historic resource guidelines as well as part of this project. So that takes up all of the hours that we have currently. The third item up here is something that is brand-new. It's really just in the planning stages. It was brought to the Landmark Board last year, at the end of last year, by one of the upcoming, or newly-appointed board members. So at this point, we'll just be doing a little coordination and kind of, sort of, I guess, research on this. And lastly, number four, the board initiated an update to their Bothell Then and Now book in 2016. We currently do not have funding for this project, but we know how much Bothell has changed in the last 10 years, so it's really needed. They did apply for a grant from Snohomish County, and pending that, we will maybe be able to move forward with this project this year, but we're not sure yet. And then lastly, this is just a breakdown of how my hours work. 10 hours per week, like I said, 52 weeks, gives me 52, or 520 base hours. We received two grants from ForeCulture this year so far to give us an extra 330 hours. So the total hours is 850, then of course, take out the 260 that I spent doing kind of the Landmark Board stuff, and that gives us 590 hours to work on projects. So that's kind of where we're at. Thanks.
Thank you. And then if the council would like to take any comments from the public, I know you've had a couple already during public comment period. I believe there's at least one other person who may want to speak to the items on the docket, and then we'll go back and review all of these in more detail.
Would anybody like to provide public comment on the docket? Go ahead, come up to the podium, give your name for the record.
Anna Garde at 16524, 104th Northeast in Bothell. I am here speaking to you this evening as an individual citizen and not on behalf of the Shoreline Board. I'm asking council to take up the specific code amendment in the Bothell Shoreline Master Program. It is BMC 1313060E6A, which has to do with shoreline buffer reductions. I ask that it be taken up for this year, 2019, or deferred at council initiative to next year and place it on the 2020 list. This item is time-sensitive. As the Wira 8 Salmon Conservation, Chinook Salmon Conservation Program states, lethal and sub-lethal temperatures in the Sammamish River during adult migration are considered a key constraint on the recovery of the Chinook salmon. This is a very important issue. And this is why I'm bringing it forward to you as being time-sensitive, that needs to be done before 2025. It is time-sensitive because, just as you talked about earlier, it involves climate change. Over the last five years, our climate temperatures have climbed faster than anyone anticipated, and they are, and they are not going to slow down. At the same time, this is happening to the seas, so that we are caught on all sides by problems relating to our fisheries resources. But you also, in addition to the climate change issues, you also have this Wira study that you are signators to and participate in, that I'm sure you're familiar with. And this also has guidelines in it and goals, and adaptive management goals that recognize the issues of climate change, and also you should be implementing, and you should not have code amendments that are contrary to them. So this is why I'm proposing that you pick this up. In your current buffer reduction program, it allows a 100-foot buffer on the Sammamish River to be reduced by either 40% or 50% if buffer averaging is proposed. That means that this 100-foot buffer would go down to 60 feet, or possibly to 50 feet. And the problem with that is that it does not accommodate the large trees that are necessary to shade the river and provide the temperature reduction that is necessary to bring the temperatures down so they are no longer lethal to the salmon, and particularly to the Chinook salmon, which migrate in the late summer. So in summary, I would hope that you would pick this item up for your possible agenda this year, 2019. I do not believe that it would take the 120 hours that have been suggested for this simple amendment, but it is time-sensitive and should not be left to the update for 2025. So please initiate it and put it on the 2020 docket. Do you have any questions?
I wouldn't ask questions of community members. We stopped doing that.
Okay, and this is the Wira 8 study, as Andy is well familiar with.
My signature's on that thing. All right, next, we have another gentleman. Next, we have another gentleman.
My name's Martin Reimers. I'm with Concept Architecture. I represent the clients with the item 18, the zone change. And I just want to take the opportunity to introduce myself. We would, of course, prefer to have it seen before 2023, but we'll look forward to working with you as soon as it can come up. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to provide public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Catteman?
So to help us track through your discussions, we've got this handy-dandy little calculator. We're going back up here in a second. So at this time, if you have particular items that you would like to talk about in more detail.
Is there any agenda item, or I'm sorry, docketing items that you guys want to ask more questions, clarifying questions on? Deputy Mayor.
I wanted to ask of the Landmark Board consultants. Earlier in visitor comments, Pat Pierce spoke about the historic districts. It doesn't appear to me that historic district adjustments to Title 22 were included in the docket, and so I just wanted clarification on that, and then ask what that would take for hours.
I believe those are addressed in the docket. And Sarah can help me with this, but I think it's item...
I think it's the first slide, number eight.
So it's in the housekeeping item, say we have number eight?
So, oh, housekeeping, okay. I was looking under landmark preservation. So number eight...
Please say it in that one.
It doesn't look like, it says downtown historic resources regulations and possibly Title 22 landmark preservation to preserve historic buildings' facades on Main Street and in the downtown core in coordination with the downtown historic district and landmark feasibility study. So is that downtown? The downtown historic district, I was assuming was Main Street. Is that, is that not the case? Is that in reference to the neighborhood that wants, that's been working on the historic district for the last five years?
It's actually, we've boiled this down, and so there's several things that are in here that are not fully described. It's actually an item number nine. I gave you the wrong item before, I apologize. So it's item 9B.
Yeah, that's what I just read.
Yes. So thank you for finding that one. So that is looking at the research that Sarah's doing right now on the downtown, the inventory, and looking, there are also amendments that are proposed for Title 22 that would allow for the creation of historic districts. That's something that's gone through the Landmark Preservation Board already, and that's something that the city attorney and I have been talking about. We have some other things that we want to take back to the board to discuss related to that, as well as some other aspects of Title 22. So that's what's been in limbo there for a little while, but that is ready to move forward this year with the board. And that would set up the mechanism to designate those districts and also the criteria for that. So I think that addressed at least part of Ms. Pierce's questions that's related to the Title 22.
Thanks for the clarification. It just wasn't clear in the verbiage, and I just wanted to double-check and make sure. And then I had another question regarding the Shoreline Master Program regarding the buffer enhancement. I know I'm probably oversimplifying, but if we wanted to get rid of the exemptions, couldn't we just cross them out and call it a day?
If it were that simple. Anything that we do to the Shoreline Master Program has to be approved by Department of Ecology. The buffer enhancement and the averaging, the section that was referred to, was negotiated and worked out with Ecology during the last update. So this is something we've talked to our Shoreline consultant about and provide some information to the Shorelines Board. It's not something that's been used extensively to this point, and our consultant feels that it's a benefit to have it in there because it creates the opportunity to get the developer of the property to actually enhance the buffer with much more vegetation than they would have to otherwise. So they could just leave it in its existing condition, which may just be Himalayan blackberry, which is not going to enhance the function or the shade the river at all. So our consultant feels that there's a benefit to keeping it in there. So we would like to go through the process of actually exploring that more, seeing if there's a better way to do it, if there's things that, rather than just cross it off, if there are things that would be beneficial, because we feel there's benefit to having it in there now.
Could you, in that context, explain what happened with Security Gun Club?
So if I recall correctly the discussion about that, I'm not intimately familiar with all the details of that project, but I think they did use the enhancement aspect of it. I don't know how much the buffer was reduced in that case. I don't recall offhand, but it did provide some for additional vegetation and plantings there. They had to do a planting plan, and that will grow up over time and actually provide more shade for the river than we would have gotten otherwise. That was an example where it was all just overgrown with blackberries.
Well, no, really. There were big trees that were taken down that were already providing shade, and so I guess I'm just wondering if that's really, I don't know. It's complicated, but there were huge trees taken down, too. And so while it's great that they'll grow up and provide shade, there may be no salmon left by the time that happens. I guess that's my concern. So I would like, I would like to move this forward, and wondered if staff had any suggestions about, if the rest of council agreed, what might come off the list.
We'd be looking to the council to tell us what you'd want off the list in place.
Are the ones that you've got listed in priority order, one through 12?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I'd be interested in hearing what other council members think.
So we're just trying to get clarifying questions right now. Do you guys have any questions? We'll get into the horse trading stuff here in just a minute. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a clarifying question on the number 12 school district request. The city collect impact fees. It says 50-plus hours, or is that 50-plus hours plus legal, or?
The 50 hours are for community development staff. That does not include any hours that legal staff would have to put into it.
Okay. And is there any benefit to us doing that?
It simplifies the process for applicants that have to pay the fee, because right now they pay all of their fees to the city, either online or at the counter, except for school impact fees. They have to go up to the school district offices to pay those fees, and then bring us back a receipt basically saying that they've paid those fees. The school district also requested this because they're not really set up to collect the They don't have dedicated staff to really deal with that, so they're not, they don't have full-time office hours to be able to do it. It creates some hassle and inconvenience for applicants.
Okay. So it seems like we would be taking on that workload, and there's no, are we getting paid for that, or?
We can recover our administrative costs for collecting the fees, yes. And that's one of the reasons that we have some extra hours in there, because we'd have to figure out what those costs are and what we would require for the reimbursement. Would that come out of the impact fee, or would that be something that the district would pay in addition? So there'd also be an interlocal agreement that we would have to develop with them to do that.
Oh, great. So we would get, okay, perfect. Thank you.
A little cut off the top. I like it. I like the way you think. It's good. Councilmember Reagan?
Not my idea. It's what's allowed under state law. But I'm happy to take credit for it.
On number 14, the signs, potential code amendments in the U.S. Supreme Court ruling of Reed versus the town of Gilbert. That happened a number of years ago, and I was assuming that there was a timeline associated with that. Am I incorrect?
There's, I'll defer to the deputy city attorney for that one. She's been waiting to talk about that.
There, I mean, the timeline was immediately. So currently, we enforce very little of our sign code because it's almost impossible to pull out the pieces of the sign code that aren't content-based, based on the way it was written, which all of them were written in that way. You know, they identify political signs. A good example, even in the more recent downtown code, is sandwich boards are allowed for restaurants. Well, that's a content. To read it to know if a restaurant's doing it is very content-based. So right now, we don't enforce the code as it's written, and it's very difficult to enforce it generally. So the timeline was immediately, and we are currently in compliance, but only because we have very little enforcement ability without a lot of conversations between code enforcement staff and myself and other legal staff. So the time, the input from, for any particular question of enforcement is pretty significant at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. I feel that on number nine, where we have deferred the parking requirement related to outcome of parking management plan, it's, I know it's Phase 2, it's not funded, but I would like to put it back on the docket for 2020. I think with the building and apartments and all that's going on downtown, we really do need a parking plan, and so I'd like to see us put it back in, even if we delay it till 2020.
And the recommendation right now is for 2020?
Oh, I thought it was deferred.
It deferred to 2020. And what we mean by the deferral, what the council directed last year, for those items you deferred to 2019, it wasn't a directive to staff to do that work in 2019 as much as it was to say that you would reconsider in 2019 whether to do that. And that's how we're treating the 2020 items here, is we're saying anything that we're not proposing to at least begin this year, we would bring back to you in the docket again next year. You could either initiate the work on it in 2020 or defer it again.
I appreciate that. I see what I missed now. Thank you.
All right. So we had a round of questions. You ready for the horse trading, bartering deliberation discussion?
Got my worksheet working here.
You guys got your pencils out back there? You ready to go? All right. Councilmember Zorn?
Okay. So duck behind the podium. These aren't lobbed directly at you. I'm starting back and working my way forward. For the things that fall past your allotted budgeted time, I see that comprehensive landscape we're talking about 2020. I'm glad to see that timeframe, because I think that's, that needs to be addressed sooner than later. I have mixed feelings about the property owner's request and Nike Hill. I can understand when it's an individual property owner who's feeling a time constraint of redeveloping their property. I'm also concerned that this ought to go into 2023 for a bigger picture of our plan. So I have concerns, but I understand why we need to wait on that. Item number 21, the Shoreline Master Plan, 2025 is way, way off. We need to bump that up in the timeframe. So if we were to take a vote on bumping that up, on removing the exemption language, I would be totally for that. So this is the place where, I hope you don't feel picked on. Number, back on page 117, item number nine. I do appreciate the item number B and the focus on that. Item number C, I'm just going to quote someone who does not live in my neighborhood, but in reference to, because we would be impacted by the general downtown corridor, is that it is reprehensible to put four stories next to single families. And many of these homes that would be impacted are rambler homes, and they're small, and you're talking about putting four stories next to them on a, and as I recall, these are buildings that step back to four stories away from single family, and we're talking about removing that three-story overlay, so it's a complete four stories with affordable housing. And I will fight that tooth and nail. I will tell you that neighbors will fight that tooth and nail. We battled that really hard to protect our neighborhood, and we own what little concessions that we got. That said, in general downtown corridor, if you could find, there's areas that are on the north side of Beardsley that are not up against single-family homes, and you talk about removing that three-story overlay, I think you would not get pushback on that. But up against single-family homes, I'm just telling you, you're going to have serious pushback on that.
And I think that, excuse me, that's part of the recognition, I think, on staff's part, that that would involve a lot of public engagement.
You will get it.
And we're not proposing to do it this year.
I'm just telling you now, you will get it. So, and then there's an, oh, then my last, I think it's my last comment, famous last words. Item number 11, also on page 117, for nursing homes, 2019. I am glad that it's in that, in that timeframe. The ones that, especially the Shoreline, taking out the exemption, you know, I sat there and I looked at this, what would we trade out for this? You know, for the priorities. And I have to say, right now, I don't know if I can make that decision for you. I think I would defer to you on what could we wait at the expense to get Shoreline in and have that discussion on that.
And it would really be beneficial for staff to have some direction for council on that.
So you want us, you want us to play the...
We put together our best recommendation, and we're happy to trade things out, but that's why we bring this to you to be able to...
Okay. Well, we can be the bad guys if you need us to be the bad guys.
Well, we'll be bad guys.
But I really would like to see that get a higher priority in the schedule. And that's some of my comments.
Okay. Who wants to go next? Are we just all happy? Good as, how about good as is? Is anybody just fine with the way it is? Okay. Councilmember Reagan? Councilmember McAuliffe? Where are you at, James? I'm sorry. Councilmember McNeil? You're okay leaving it as is? Deputy Mayor?
In my probing questions, I did not recognize and appreciate how much work goes into this document, and so I want to take the time to do that. This is always one of the most depressing meetings of the year for me, because there's so much that we want to get done in so little time. And I know that Planning Commission had asked for an additional long-term planner, and we did not put it in the budget, to our regret now, but it was just a tough budget. So I appreciate, all the work went into it. I appreciate the people who spoke up from the audience to help give us better perspective on what these items are. I was questioning the nursing home item, and so having someone come and speak was really helpful for me to understand why that needed to happen, so I'm definitely in support of that. I'm elated to see 9B in the docket. Maintaining the buildings and facades on Main Street is near and dear to my heart, and so anything that we can do to help that cause is wonderful. And I guess I would just say, regarding the Shoreline Master Program, I take seriously when you say the buffers there, or the exemptions are there for a reason, but 2025 is way, way too long for now. And I guess if I had my druthers, it would happen in 2019, even if it's like December 5th. So I don't know how anyone else in council feels about that, and I certainly don't know what I would trade out. So...
If it would help on that one, if we, one possibility would be to put a 2020 date on there, so then you could revisit that next year?
Yeah. Well, and considering it's now, you know, mid-February, if we put it on, and could it be like number one in line in 2020?
That would be up to the council next year.
Because I might be able to live with that. So anyway, I think those are all my comments. I did want to acknowledge Councilmember Zorn's input on the 9C, and I think we can find a compromise, because I think there are areas that are not next to one-story ramblers, and that will be on or near our 522 BRT line, and if there's anywhere that should have transit-oriented development, that would be it in my book, and potentially maybe even loosening parking restrictions if it's right on the bus line. So that's probably a conversation for 2020, but I did want to acknowledge that I hear what you're saying. So that's my input. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we have three that like it just the way it is. Before anybody else talks, I wanted to put my 10 cents on item 21. So I was the chair of the Salmon Recovery Board. I think 100-foot buffer, quite frankly, isn't enough, but it's based on best available signs, so it is what it is. But to reduce it from there, I think, is a disservice to having buffers. I'm just curious, is it just the... I'm just curious, is it just the shorelines or is it all stream buffers are eligible for having buffer reductions based on planting?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe this is just for the Sammamish.
This one is just for the Shoreline.
Just Shoreline?
Shoreline designation, yes. And I believe it just applies on the Sammamish.
So yeah, I mean, there's other parts of the Sammamish that have 200-foot buffers, 150-foot like nothing, and two, another 200 feet, you can have the really light uses that have trees in it. So I was here when this thing was passed, when it initially was passed to reduce the 100-foot buffer for planting. And I still to this day don't see it's right. So moving it to 2020, I think, would be a great thing. I would, I wouldn't mind seeing it in 2019, but like everybody else here, I have, there's nothing on here that I would bump necessarily off to try to take that and put it on. So I mean, we could always just go back and look at the ordinance that we just passed, the most recent one that updated this and say, we just want to rescind it. I don't know if that'd be easier, less time-consuming. And then the Department of Ecology, I mean, I'd be shocked if they're like, no, we want you to be able to reduce your buffers for plantings. I just, I would be shocked, I guess, is my perspective.
As I understand it, and I wasn't here for any of this, obviously, but based on what our consultant has said, that there was quite a bit of time and effort that went into negotiating that with Ecology, so that they were willing to approve it. And I'm not familiar enough with the Shoreline Master Program to know if it would just be a matter of deleting that section. Oftentimes, one section has ties to other parts of the code. So that's something that, you know, we would have to go and take a look at. So that's why there's a little bit more time involved with this. Because it does get a little more complicated, dealing with Ecology and looking at all of the other implications to it. But what I'm hearing, and I'm not trying to put words in the council's mouth, is you'd be comfortable with that if we put it as a 2020 item? And if by some miracle we get through everything, then in 2019, then, you know, we could, we could start to look at that this year. Otherwise, it would come back to you next year as part of the docket for your consideration at that time and whether to initiate it next year.
So the ones that are happy with the way it is, are you guys okay with moving item 21 up to 2020? Okay, you have a majority. As with the docket as it stands. Unless, Councilperson Olson, you want to say some stuff? We can just move on? Okay. So I guess the only real change that I've heard that has majority support, and we can go through, Councilmember Zorn, you had quite a few here that I don't know if you wanted to have more council discussion on, but what I heard was leave it as is, is provided by staff with the one change of moving item 21 up to the 2020 docket instead of 2025, I think it said, or 19 or?
25 was, is the next Shoreline update. That was, that was more for information for the council. Just that would be the next time that we would get to it as part of the regular update, but we can certainly do it sooner than that.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with that, with the docketing process?
That does not change any of the hours that we have up there, so.
Great. What do you mean by that? Can you clarify?
Well, because the second column, the 2020 plus, that includes any hours that are beyond 2019. So we will change the date on the docket, but that doesn't change any of the hours that we've allocated for 2019 work items.
Good, I think we all understand that. Yep, okay. So I think we need a motion though?
And I have one other question, a direct question for the council to answer, and that's whether you want to initiate the request from the North Shore School District for the collection of impact fees. If the city initiates it, then the city just takes on the, the cost of doing that. If it's a privately initiated amendment, then we would charge them. We have an hourly charge. We would ask them to apply and then we would charge them our time to do that work. Our best estimate is probably between $5,000 and $10,000 to process that.
So if we adopt this docket tonight as it stands, then we can collect that reimbursement, I guess, for processing their permits?
I'm asking for a direction from the council as to whether you want us to ask them to apply or whether you want to initiate it as a city-initiated amendment. If it's a city-initiated amendment, we would not charge them to do that.
Oh yeah, charge them, man, for sure. 10%. Just kidding. I didn't mean that. All right. So is everybody okay with that, that we would have them apply? Not any?
Yeah.
Okay, you got a majority.
And if there are any that the council would like to take on, we assume that we'll just go through our regular process with, with any of these amendments. We'll take them through the Planning Commission or the Landmark Preservation Board, whatever the body would be. If there are any that you want to take on individually, so that it does not go through that process, we would also need that direction. There's nothing in here that we're recommending go through anything other than the regular process. And it didn't sound like there was anything that jumped out at council tonight as a, as a concern for that stand, from that standpoint.
I think we're okay with the way it stood, so. Did you have a question, Deputy Mayor, you want to ask before you get a motion?
I wanted to ask, so it sounds like you don't have any recommended for it to come straight to us. I was just thinking if it would save time, is there anything that would make sense to come straight to us? Since time is always the issue.
Yes, time is always an issue. There's nothing that I can think of right offhand because most everything, it's helpful to go through the process and have the Planning Commission review, excuse me, pardon me, have the Planning Commission and Landmark Preservation Board do their work on it. That actually shortens the process through the council. So, you know, if there is something that pops up as we're going through it, we can come to you at that time and say, we're recommending we short-circuit the process and come directly to council.
That sounds great. I think if there's an opportunity you see, then just come, yeah, come to us because time is money.
All right, do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor.
I move, we approve the docket as presented. Do I have to say anything about that? Schools, removing the schools? Okay, I'll just say as, as presented and with the one change of making number 21 to be considered in 2020.
Say it. All right, it's moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember McNeil to approve the proposed 2019 docket, assigning priorities as recommended by staff and as amended with moving item 21 from 2020, whatever, to 2020. And to provide direction, okay, we already did that. Okay. Any discussion on the motion? I just want to say that was the fastest time we've ever been through the planning docket in the seven. How about you? Has it been 12 years since? Yeah, long time. Good job, you guys. All right.
Now we just have to get it done.
Now, yeah, right? Hey, maybe this is a symbol, it'll go quicker because it went so fast in council. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? See none, place your vote. We're blinking out here. City clerk? Oh no, yours isn't blinking.
Passes 7-0.
All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we are on to, count. Does anybody want to do council conversations or should we go ahead and just move into executive session? Let's take a vote of the council, see if council. Go ahead and do, if you'd like to do this quick announcement, that'd be fine.
I'll do it really quick. I just want to recognize that our staff did such a wonderful job for snow removal and for keeping our citizens safe. But North Shore School District also delivered 2,500 meals to families who could not leave their home and get their own food or go to the school. And they were out eight days. And so they gathered together, the superintendent, all of the people, North Shore School District Foundation, and fed 2,500 families. So I just think that should be recognized.
They did a good job advertising it too. I got emails and robocalls and everything. Did you need something there, city attorney? Making me nervous.
Just to move into closed session, you need to read your script.
Oh yeah, I will.
Oh, great. You look like you're getting up to go to the room.
No, not yet. Yeah, we're doing council conversations. Deputy Mayor.
I just wanted to draw attention to the new welcome sign in the lobby. I had the pleasure of walking in on it and got to point to my, my language on the, it's all different languages, and point to the Chinese version of welcome. So that was really exciting with, with Councilmembers Zorn. So great job, it looks fantastic, I love it.
Any more chit-chat? Oh no.
I got a long one for you. I got a fun, I got a fun fact. So today I learned something that I didn't know about who invented the golf tee. And it was, it was invented in 1899 by Dr. George Grant. And, and the reason I bring that up this month is because this month is African-American or Black History Month. And he was a black inventor of the golf tee. And it's interesting because back then, African-Americans or black people back then could not play golf. So I thought that was very interesting that he actually invented the golf tee and I just wanted everybody on council to know that and Black History Month. So thank you.
Anybody else just want to chit-chat? You good? No, okay, good. Want to go over here? All right, so we are going into closed session for approximately two hours for two items. One is in pursuant to RCW 4230140, which is labor negotiations. Is also, we're going into an executive session pursuant to RCW 43301101G, Public Employee Performance Review. We do not plan to come back out and make decisions after the executive session, so we'll be adjourned after that.